... President, it's time to start, past time to start. I ask that everybody rise and remain standing, have the open prayer and to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for the many blessings you've shown to us through the years and continue to show to this county. We pray that you watch over all of us and keep us safe. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see the please? If you've been watching TV at all over the last few days, you've seen a lot of Olympics. And it's always, makes me feel proud when American athletes do well and they stand on the podium and stand their attention while they're playing the national anthem of a winning, of a winning person or entity or team. And it's been exciting if you're interested in that sort of thing. It's not exciting if you don't care anything about it. But the Americans are doing well and I hope they continue to do it. I like that very much. With that said, has anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
No citizens to be heard? Have we got the minutes that we need to approve? We should have.
Yes, sir.
I think we've got, I think everybody's got how many?
Two sessions.
And have all of you read through the minutes? Have you had time yet? Pete, if you have. Now, take as much time as you want. Pete, have you?
Yes, sir.
After reading the minutes and looking at them, I have not seen anything that needs correcting or adding to them. Is there anything from any of the court concerned, any mistakes that you've seen in the minutes? And if not, I'll move that we adopt the minutes as presented as the official minutes of the past two meetings, I believe, we're looking at. And if there's a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, raise your right hand. Pete, are you voting also? Okay, all voting for it. Minutes approved. Item seven on the agenda is a resolution authorizing county grant to the community council of South Central Texas Inc. for providing home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly, have or have a disability. Wait a minute, I'm not reading. Homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability. The presenter is Bobby Delkey?
Dyke.
Dyke.
That's okay.
I shouldn't have asked you beforehand, it could be Dyke or Dickie or Dyke or Dick.
Very common. My name is mispronounced all the time, so it's...
That's a German name?
Yes, sir. This request is done annually. It's for the, our application for the Texans Feeding Texans Grant through the Department, Texas Department of Agriculture, Carrents County. First page behind the cover page on the packet I gave you gives you a little history. Carrents County's match amount annually is $779.25. That next column shows you the amount of match that comes to the county and then the number of meals we're able to serve because of this, because of this grant. And so, that's our, my request this morning is the approval of the resolution and the match amount of $779.25.
Okay, thank you. This, this is a very important resolution and it's important to the county and the people of the county that need this help. And believe me, it's, it's appreciated and used greatly. My secretary is involved in it and goes every week, just about, not every week, but twice a month, I think. And we appreciate everything y'all do very much. It, it helps a lot of people in this county and we're, we have others that have not been participating that are eligible and we're working as hard as we can to try to get them involved in this also. But we, we really appreciate what y'all have done. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the resolution.
There's a, there's a motion on second to approve the resolution as presented.
I'd rather Jase sign the resolution.
Okay. And any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for the resolution carried. We really appreciate what y'all have done. Whatever you need from us, well, let me know.
Thank you very much. The balance of your packet that I gave you is the service numbers for the remaining programs that we offer here in Carrents County. The utility assistance, case management, the transition people out of poverty and our WIC program along with rural childcare services.
And all of these are very important to the county, believe me. We unfortunately have a number of people eligible and we're looking all the time, my secretary works on this program a lot, and trying to get everybody that's available or that's eligible to be available, involved in this. And we thank y'all very much.
Okay, if she would like us to come down, make presentations at any groups or whatever, she can contact me.
I suspect that she will. I'll tell her she's on vacation this week, but I'll make sure she knows and understands.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
If you have any time to serve later. I'm signing the resolution. All right, item eight on the agenda is a presentation from Jess Williams on employee benefits proposal. Now, remember that you're getting us one shot of this and we don't have to have a long, long presentation, but do what you think you need to do.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Hope y'all are doing well this morning. It's always nice to visit with you guys, especially when we can talk about rates going down instead of rates going up.
Yes, sir.
Just really, first of all, thank you for allowing me to, the power to use whatever experience that I have with negotiating with the carriers, going out to the marketplace and working on getting the best possible rate that we can. And with that evaluation, Humana, who is your current carrier, they still proposed the best benefit package with a 10.75% decrease. A lot of that is contributed to the success that we had during the course of the year with our vitality program, wellness. We really got engaged and got 46 total members, I believe that, that participated, that engaged the part of the contract that was no cost to you, that allowed a 2% guaranteed decrease. So that was a positive. And we were able to exploit that with the loss ratio that you had to come, come down to already 10.75%. So, I detailed that for you in this one page. Wanted to kind of tell you that most of the, what I'm seeing with trend around is an average between anywhere three to 35%. So, we definitely did good by getting a decrease. I did do a five, that's last portion of this page shows kind of a five-year medical rate history that we've had here at the county, starting back in 2012. And you can see the curve trends up where last year we spiked a little bit and now we've come back down. And the red line is just the national average. And that is a, based on all plan types. So, it's a little bit, it's a little bit confusing because that's all plans all over the nation, including HSAs, high deductible plans, and y'all have a very strong plan currently. So, we're going to continue to work on, if we can double that 46 to 80, we can guarantee a 4% going into the third year of your contract. And we hope to do that. And if we turn to the back page, any questions on that page at all? We are asking one item that's just kind of some housekeeping, is to change the effective date to the first of the month after 60 days based on the hire, which would really help administratively and help us with the mechanics of deductions and sometimes the confusion that that causes. But on the back page, it's, Humana has, it was called Vitality, but effective January 1st, they're changing the name to Go 365. Personally, I like the name Vitality better, but they're, they're doing this. And they're going to make it easier for people to get engaged and they're providing more bonus points through their activities. They added Lowe's as a provider, for example, additional gift cards, easier to gain points. They're going to have their own portal, so you don't have to go through the Humana website in order to access. What I like about it too is so many of the employees have a hard time doing their health assessment and that becomes a barrier for them to participate. They won't, now with the new effective January 1, they won't have to do their health assessment. We want to encourage them to do that, but they won't have to do that and they still can get engaged in the program. So, I think that sometimes pauses frigidness, people being active, and I think now we can get more people engaged. And it's just really worked out. I appreciate y'all allowing us to, to, to help the employees get engaged in wellness and, you know, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. We're seeing more and more statistics that show that and we're going to continue to beat that drum because it does work and it shows in the pricing that we receive this year.
The change in effective date will not, I guess this is a question more for Launan than for you, but it will not affect greatly the total money I've laid for...
No, it will not.
We don't now have that many new appointments.
Correct, and it's just to simplify the payroll process of premiums are not having to be prorated. If they become effective on their 90th day, it may be on August 10th, so you have to prorate the month of August and it just lessens the work involved and the potential for errors.
I personally appreciate your efforts because everything I hear is that any, any thing involved with the healthcare industry now is always a sell thing. So, the fact that you were able to benefit the county with the reduction is certainly good. And throw five, you rose as, I think she's been helpful in trying to get the vitality program going.
She has.
And that's, that's, that's good. Appreciate that.
So, just the, the actual monthly premium for the county, will that be the $88,000?
Correct.
And then the $1,656.42, that's?
Your total.
That's the total package for the year?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that for the fiscal year or for the calendar year?
That's the fiscal year.
And that is health. That doesn't include the life insurance, which remain constant at $2.40 a month per employee.
And the life insurance is part of this package?
Yes, sir. And there was no change with that price. So, and on the health side, it was a, the annual dollar change was $128,000. So, from a budget standpoint.
Do you think you want to raise it something? No, I just kind of wondering about the, if it was a cheaper price without the life insurance, just asking.
I wouldn't think so.
Is this something that's an addition, that's added in addition to the insurance?
Yeah, well, it's something y'all provide currently.
But having life insurance does not affect our health premiums.
That is correct.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
If we didn't have life insurance, it'd be exactly the same health premium. Is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're asking.
That's my question. I will say, I think we all have an extremely high-level benefit package. I do think the employees appreciate it. We're going to try to, during the open enrollment, of course, emphasize what a great package y'all have and try to educate them more and more on how to best effectively use their plan. One of the things that we talked about that Humana added that people, I think, could take advantage of is the tele, where you can actually communicate with a doctor, with a co-pay and not add the hassle of going to see the physician in person, which saves time and money and convenience. And you talk to a board-certified physician on a FaceTime. Things are sure changing, you know, but it is a very convenient and effective way to access your healthcare, get results, because the doctor will see you literally, maybe through a device, and then be able to prescribe what you need and you go on down the road.
Here's, let me make a comment about this, and this is a personal thing. I'm not covered by this program because I was married to a schoolteacher and she was covered through her school teaching. And as a result, the family has been covered for years and I chose to keep the coverage I had and not change it or anything. And it's, it's, it has nothing to do with one being so much better than the other. It's a personal thing with me and it, it does not reflect at all on what's, what's provided under the program for our county here. I will continue to keep what I've got. I'm not going to change. But if, if anybody gets to asking whether county judges need coverage by this, why not? Well, you can tell them that's a personal choice because of what was available through my wife's employment for many years as a schoolteacher. But that said, you do a good job. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate y'all. And if you need, have any questions on the phone call away, please don't hesitate to call.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, we're on item nine, is that correct? Discuss, approve, disapprove, employee benefits proposal. Let's go. Ms. Kepf.
I would recommend to the court to continue insurance through Williams Business Services with Humana for the products offered, health and life.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for it. Motion carried. Item 10 on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, change in the county policy on the effective date of employer-provided medical and life benefit plans to commence on the first day of the month following 60 days of full-time employment. And that's basically part of the last one, but the motion wasn't exclusive of that.
Right, because we have to address it as a policy issue. But this is just that it will simplify billing issues and make things much more concise.
I'll make the motion to approve item on the agenda presented.
Second. Am I going to change it to state on full-time employees of Carrents County after 60 days? Is that correct?
First day of the month following 60 days of full-time employment.
How are you going to make that change?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for it. Motion carried. Item 11 on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, change orders for independent audit for fiscal year ending 9/30/2016. We have, I think, two proposals, is that correct?
Yes, sir. As the judge mentioned, we received two proposals. One is from our current auditing firm, AVIP, and the other was from Beasley, Mitchell and Company from Las Cruces, New Mexico. The proposal from Beasley, Mitchell and Company does not include the necessary filing of the single audit for fiscal year 16 and we will qualify to have to follow that procedure due to the courthouse restoration funds that were received within the year. We do not have to have a comprehensive annual financial report, a CAFER or a GFOA certification. So, if you turn to page two of the stapled page, which is AVIP's proposal, you'll also notice they charge an additional $2,450 for the reconciliations and adjusting any fund balances from entries from the prior year. They show juvenile probation audit in their proposal, but the county does not pay for that. The Carrents-Wilson Juvenile Probation Department does. And the other firm that offered did not include the cost for the single audit, like I said, they did not include cost for the juvenile probation audit. My recommendation to the court would be to remain with AVIP. As I've told y'all in the past, very few firms do governmental audits anymore just because of the complexity of it. And knowing that AVIP is a Texas CPA firm, almost feel like it might be a little better to stay within.
How long have they been doing this? How long have we had them?
I believe this, this year 16 was our fourth year, I believe.
Fourth year. Sometimes it's better to change or, and I'm not suggesting that it is in this, this particular instance, but in case somebody thinks we ought to change because we've had the same one too long, that's not necessarily so. It depends on the audit company and the job they do and has nothing to do with the length of time in my estimation. I've dealt with audits for 50-some years while I've been an attorney, in a lot of different situations, served on school boards and dealt with audits for the school system and it's, it's something that's important and we've got to grow in. And I would recommend that we follow the recommendation of the auditor and select, it's AVIP, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Select AVIP.
I'll make that motion. Select AVIP on item number 11.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the court?
I would like proposals again next year. I agree with the judge once in a while that different buys health, but in this instance, I think Launan's suggestion is probably the best, given the proposals we receive.
And I agree, and I also agree that we need to do proposals every year and look at them carefully to make sure that we're getting a, a good audit and an unbiased audit. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for it. Motion carried. Thank you, Launan.
Yes, sir.
Down to... Okay, item 12 on the agenda, would you discuss, approve, disapprove, change orders for the courthouse restoration phase two? Pete, you were the author of that. Do we have?
I agree. Last question, Louis Fisher, he said he would have several change orders, put them into one change, several. I had them put into one change order. And some of it in the courthouse, they're going to leave the old wood floor and the re-credits and et cetera. There'll be some, some small additions and so forth. But he did not return anything. I had Mary pack them to, or email him the agenda and tell him if he had any change orders this meeting to happen, but he did not present.
Well, this is on the agendas for the testing proposal. I were wondering about that.
That's different than, than change orders.
Okay. All right. So, there are no change orders?
No change orders. We don't have any.
Do the change orders with...
In other words, change orders will be that they change from replacing all the wood floor up there to leaving most of the old floor. We'll take it all out and replace it, so there'll be a credit. That'll be one change order that we've talked about in our meetings.
But we've got to have a proposal.
We don't have anything from Louis Fisher, so there are no change orders today.
There's nothing to do with... But all the change orders will come to the court to verify that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the court? If not, we'll move on to item 13, I believe. Discuss, approve, disapprove, construction materials, unit testing proposal for testing inspection services, again, for restoration of the courthouse phase. And I assume we're going to see the same thing or...
We have...
Do we have something on that?
We have TSI proposal that we had here. They, remember I talked to you 10 days ago or 12 days ago, they wanted to pour concrete on Monday and they had sent a, a proposal to be a testing lab, but we couldn't approve in the meeting. And I told, boy, if they wanted to pour concrete, those beams upstairs there for the, for the base of the clock tower up in the courtroom, that they would have to have a testing lab. So, they went ahead and used TSI to test the concrete when reported, so they'll have the tests on it. Although the contract says that the county pays for testing lab, which we have done on all jobs, that's normal for the county to pay that. So, we do have a proposal from TSI who did our testing on the last job, the last court, last phase of the courthouse. And we'll take it all out and replace it so there'll be a credit. That'll be one change order that we've talked about in our meetings.
But we've got to have a proposal.
We don't have anything from Louis Fisher, so there are no change orders today.
There's nothing to do. But all the change orders will come to the court to verify that? Yes. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the court? If not, we'll move on to item thirteen, I believe. Discuss, approve, disapprove, construction materials, unit testing proposal for testing inspection services, again for restoration of the courthouse phase. And I assume we're going to see the same thing or...
Well, we have...
Do we have something on that?
We have T S I proposal that we had here. Then remember I talked to you ten days ago or twelve days ago, they wanted to pour concrete on Monday. And they had sent a proposal to be a testing lab, but we couldn't approve it in the meeting. And I thought, boy, if they wanted to pour concrete, those beams upstairs there for the base that popped out up in the courtroom, that they would have to say testing lab. So they went ahead and used T S I to test the concrete when reported, so they'll have the tests on it. Although the contract says that the county pays for testing lab, which we have done on all jobs. It's normal for the county to pay that. So we do have a proposal from T S I who did our testing on the last job, the last court, last phase of the courthouse. They were reliable and satisfied with them, came within their estimates, or their architect's estimates of the amount. So I was satisfied with them. And we have another one from... Of course, they all, this is all done on a per-job basis, per-hour basis before, so they just charge us whatever it costs. We have one from P S I here, and it's similar, so anyone can look at. And we have another one from various geoprofessors. It's all similar, so... Y'all would study them, it's up to my recommendation, I'd say we use T S I again, we used before. If y'all want to look through these, y'all have packets.
Pete, do you have personal experience with any of these other than T S I?
No, I have nothing to do with the others. Haven't met them personally, they haven't called or anything, I don't know. Have called you, have the judge?
No, I've not had any contact from anybody else. I have a problem, one problem, and it is that they say that work done over eight hours a day would be charged at one and a half times hourly rate, and a time and a half for overtime. I understand that, but I don't understand why we should pay for overtime work on this testing. They need to test it in the work hours, and when the work hours are over, quit working, go to the next day, as far as I'm concerned. I just, because they may want to finish a job, or may want to go dancing that night, or the next night, work late one day, I don't want to pay time and a half overtime.
Well, it's pretty doubtful that that would occur on this courthouse job, because that would happen when you have a concrete pool where you have to continue and... We don't have any of that type of...
Well, then it doesn't need to be in here, is what I'm saying, Pete. It doesn't seem to me, if it's not going to be used, why do we put it in here? I just, I don't think we ought to agree that, because we don't have control over when they, how they work, or when they come, or where they drive from, or anything. And they need to bid it on the basis that they'll do it in regular work time. And I would have thought that's what happened, but apparently that's not so. Has it been done like this in the past?
Has it been a overtime?
Yeah.
No, it hasn't. On the last stage, they did not do overtime.
Well, I'm reluctant to pass it with the overtime provision in there, because we can't control that. They work if they choose to overtime, and I personally do not like that sort of thing. I've worked in union work as a gentleman electrician, and I understand overtime well. I spent one summer working out of this Houston Union, reading blueprints for a foreman who couldn't read blueprints, and driving him around in a pickup while I read the blueprints. I was driving and reading both, and he was getting paid as a foreman, and I was, happened to be that year seventeen years old. And I just don't like it that way, I don't think it'll be that way, but... If y'all are satisfied, I mean, have we got it? We have got a motion to get them to just do it.
Can we?
I'm not going to move against it because of that, but I strongly think that there should be no overtime on this kind of thing.
I would move that we accept T S I laboratories as our testing entity for the courthouse phase two.
Just the way they wrote the terms and conditions, Chris.
And we've used them before, have we not? Okay. Is there any further discussion? There's a motion and a second to use T S I laboratories for testing. No other discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for. Okay, item fourteen, I believe is the next agenda. Discuss, approve, disapprove, memorandum of understanding. Of course, this comes from A and M, and they have to put him over you, so we'll know what the abbreviation is. From Texas A and M, all of them don't always know. Agrolife, that's me saying them, not anybody else, personally. Extension Service, I was going to A and M for treatment as a high school football player by the vets over there, and they did a better job than the doctor did where I live. Thank goodness, I'm not anti-A and M. I have a granddaughter who graduated from there as an architect in Chicago. We've had pretty good luck with it.
Tell us what we're doing, Megan.
This is just a MOU from Agrolife Extension. It's an agreement between every county that the extension is present, which is every county in the state of Texas. We sign it every two years, and this just outlines the technology services. And so throughout the MOU, which you should have a copy of it, do you have? Okay, good. Throughout the MOU, it just explains things like if a server that would be used is kept behind a locked door, which those are all policies that the county abides by. It outlines that Agrolife provides IT services to us, so they do have administrative accounts on all of our computers so that they can access them and help fix any software problems or any issues that we're having. We also can reach out to the county IT resource if needed, that's outlined in here. There's a section that discusses the cost share program, which is how we acquire computers, like our projectors that we would use for presentation, something like that, where the county, our budget would pay for part of the item, and then Agrolife sells it at a discounted cost so that they're absorbing some of the cost too. They provide all the software for our computers, all of the updates. That's pretty much the meat of it, but this is just...
I'm with it, we approve the, in a matter of understanding between Orange County and Agrolife Extension Service for technology, for services.
Megan, is this materially the signing as a law for two years? I don't know, do you have any idea?
Absolutely, it's very similar. I actually have the past three with me, if you'd like to look at them. But yes, sir, it's just a yearly protocol that doesn't really change.
Well, I realize, well, little I know of technology, it changes rapidly, so I'm sure that tweaking is time going on.
Yeah, this is just defining the availability of me to reach out to Agrolife IT for help, how our computers will be secured in our office, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for the motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, item fifteen on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, contract with the Department of State Health Services to provide access to the Texas Electronic Registration Remote System for the purpose of issuing individual birth certificates.
Yes, we, this is a contract we have with the Department of State Health Services. For anyone who was not born in the county, we are able to issue a birth certificate to them by dialing in remotely, and this is a contract to continue doing that.
Okay, and with that, you cannot issue a birth certificate for people not born yet.
That is correct.
They have to go to where they were born.
Or to Austin.
And that's a real problem. I've tracked the law for fifty years here, trying to get birth certificates for people born somewhere else.
I think that...
It's a real problem.
Well, and nowadays with most people not being born in Orange County, you know, parents need it for...
Good men are born and been born somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Is this an existing contract?
It is, it's one that is renewed every two years, and I had the county, the assistant county attorney looked at it. It's identical to the one we signed two years ago. And I, they did not send me one that had been signed first, so I requested one to be signed first, which they did send me.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
I have it right here.
Motion and a second to approve the...
Who made the motion?
James.
James. This is item fifteen. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for. We're on to item sixteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, the list of Class One roadways after discussion of the classification process.
Second. We're one ahead, Judge.
Thank you.
Did we move?
We need six. Out of cycle payment.
You may not have the...
My dear.
Chris Cott.
My secretary, my secretary's gone, and I did this myself, so you could see the importance of my secretary being here. Item sixteen on the, on the, there's an amendment on the agenda that was posted on the proper date, and it's marked as an amendment agenda, and I was looking at one marked, just noticed immediately. And this particular one is...
Sixteen.
Sixteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, an out-of-cycle payment for Big Tech's paving for four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents for the SealCo project, and the other was deals behind due.
Yeah, this is actually the third payment that we have made to Big Tech on our annual SealCo program. The reason this is out of cycle is somehow the electronic submittal from Big Tech to Naismith was delayed, not opened, something. But Big Tech had been given the deadlines to when the data needed to be too mean to get to auditing to have bills paid in the regular cycle. It became obvious last week that that had not been done. I started checking, and Naismith said that they had just gotten it. So contractor contacted me and explained that it had been sent correctly, but somewhere down the line, it did not get processed. So with this amount, the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the contractor needs this payment, you know, quickly so that he can continue to pay his suppliers. He made me aware that last year there were issues with paperwork there also. He was paid late, and therefore he had to pay late charges to his suppliers in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars extra that he took out of his pocket. So talking with LaWanna and the judge, you know, we agreed the only way we could do this is she already had the bills ready to go for the meeting was to get the court to approve this as an out-of-cycle payment to where she could get a check cut and get it sent home yet this week and prevent any late charges or stoppage of the work.
Work is, the work has been performed, and you're satisfied with it. Everything is good, it's just that the transition didn't make it, is that what I'm hearing? In other words, it would have been in this month's regular bills had it been processed in an orderly manner.
That is correct. Yeah, there's still, as of the time of this calculation, which is through the end of July, there's still a balance of nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to be paid. So once the contractor finishes that work, which should be this week, then we will have a final inspection of all of the roadways and determination of what the, all of the accounting and what the final payment is, and then that will come here at the end of the month and probably be paid the first meeting of next month.
I would move that we approve an out-of-cycle payment to Big Tech's paving for four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents on the SealCo project before mention.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve this out-of-cycle payment, and I just want to make a comment about it. I don't have any objection to making an out-of-cycle payment if there's been a reason on our part in that maybe there was in this particular case. I do not plan to make a habit of doing out-of-cycle payments for anybody. I don't think it ought to be handled that way, I don't think that's the proper way to handle it. But I don't think we should cause a problem for our contractors either, when it's our fault apparently that this was handled the way it is. And we will make every effort from here on to not have to do it this way, because this is not the proper way to do it. When you have to make out-of-cycle payments, in particular this size, because it's four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's not your money. It doesn't mean it's not important money, because it's taxpayer money, and that's certainly as important as any of yours, and a good part of everybody's in here goes for paying to one kind of taxes or another. We want to be sure that we use ours properly. So with that said, I'm going to vote for it and support doing this, but I want to be very careful in the future to not cause this to happen again.
Correct.
Was this something that happened in Naismith's office? Can you answer that?
It's difficult to say, and that the contractor digitally or electronically transmitted it to Naismith, and I was not included in that transmittal, so I can't say one way or another, but Naismith has been partying in paperwork for quite a while.
Perhaps it would be for you to get these contractors to copy you when they send something to them?
I think it'll be handled that way. If there's something sent to an engineer or something, it needs to copy you every time.
Yeah, and if we were going to continue with these contracts, that definitely would be the process, but the...
Well, we've got another big payment coming on this one, do we not?
Yes.
And next time, this better not happen this way, because it's not going to get the same treatment. They need to get it to you and, or get a copy to you so that you can see it and prove it, there's not a problem, we know.
Well, my heart, Mark, is what Naismith wants to say. I think they've been derelict in a number of duties which have been discussed at length.
Oh, and just to clarify, Judge, you commented if it was any fault of ours, let's be sure that the record shows, Mr. Baker, that it was Naismith's and/or the contractor's fault, not anybody from now to me and my office.
I figured it was you.
I'm sure that if the newspapers are reporting it, you're not suggesting that they might not report it accurately.
Well, I just want to give them accurate information.
Okay, it's accurate, I think, at this point. Joe, are you still writing articles to be published anywhere at this point?
Just to clarify, I'm reporting for the public, not the newspapers.
I was talking with Joe before the meeting, and I certainly hope he stays in Orange County and has future input with some kind of reporting. He's good-headed and has done a good job. We appreciate you through the years.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, uh, where are we?
Motion.
We've got a motion and a second. We need to vote on the motion. The motion is what, ma'am?
To approve the out of cycle payment, Judge.
Okay. And with that said, all in favor of the motion, signify or raise your right hand. And all opposed, same side, all voting for a motion to adjourn. Item seventeen, open the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, list of class one roadways after discussion of the classification process. Other Dale Stein, I think that's a result of our talking previously about class one and class two and class three, and I don't understand what's what. So with that said, Dale will lighten us up some.
Yeah, during the last meeting, there were a lot of questions and concerns about the class one, uh, roadways that we were, hadn't listed and I was trying to get approved. After thinking about that meaning, it finally dawned on me, the reason there was so much confusion is that we did not have a classification of the roadways or definitions of the various classifications of the roadways. So I was a step ahead of myself in trying to list and approve the roadways to be in a class one, class one had not actually been defined. Now, with your packet, I understand Mary sent out not only my recommendation for the classification, but also the list of class one roadways. We're not going to look at that list of roadways and that it's identical to what we had the last time. My goal today is to get the classifications of the roadways approved and then we will look at what roadways fall into the various classifications. Because it's, it's critical in a roadway system to designate the hierarchy of the various roads that are in that system. All the way from your residential streets up through your major collectors and with the state and national systems of expressways. Of course, here in the county, uh, we're on a much smaller system, but we still have a hierarchy of roadways that we have on our, our system. And so what I have recommended is actually four classifications. Class one being the highest and being the thoroughfares. Class two, then are the collectors. Class three would be your normal roadways. And then the last one being just normal residential streets. And as listed there, each one of them have the tight surface that would fall into that category, the width of the roadway that would normally be utilized for that category, the speed limit that would be established for that category, and then the drainage requirements of that category. Then there's additional item for the residential and that it is a residential area, lower speeds. Uh, in most cases, they're already posted, but I would suggest that we prohibit truck traffic through these residential areas except for delivery purposes. Okay, where the large eighteen-wheelers and other, other heavy vehicles are prohibited from those areas, which would typically do more damage on the residential streets than on our, our thoroughfares and other classifications. So as you can see on that list, each one of them are different and this will allow the road and bridge then to determine how and what we should be doing to the various roadways and assist with the, uh, programs that we have that we will be working on through the years.
With some of these roads, once you get a classification, will we allow, can we maybe prohibit some trucks from driving on certain county roads? As for cut across example, by Mr. Yarder's house, there's a county road, but sometimes trucks don't want to stop at that stop sign and make the big turn, so they cut through the cemetery and, and go through. Would we can, would we prohibit them from doing that?
The state statute does have a process that we can on any county road, if we follow the process, we can load limit and prohibit vehicles from using those roadways. Now, the general process is we have to determine if we're going to do load limit it, then we would need to go through and determine what legal load could travel that roadway through engineering studies, provide that data to Tech Dot. Tech Dot would either agree or disagree with our calculations and then allow us to sign appropriately. But we can't just arbitrarily go up and stick a no truck sign or a load limit sign on the, on the roadway without following the process. With that said, as with any sign that we put on the roadway, I think most of you all realize that that little piece of metal, though it does no enforcement, we still need the sheriff's office to assist in enforcing whatever signs we have out there. So if we do put these signs up to prohibit vehicles from using various roadways, then we would need to make sure that the deputies are aware of that and train them appropriately for whatever measures they have to take.
Dale, I have a couple of questions on the class one thoroughfare, seal coat surface, and it has on the second, it has twenty-two foot, twenty-six foot. That means just the seal coat surface, right?
That's correct. That's not the right, yeah, that's not the right of way. That's clearly the, the driving surface.
And here it has no low water crossing, meaning that everything has to be at culvert bridges.
That's correct.
And nothing can be, where water just passes over.
That's correct.
Now, each one of these have these, so there's no more low water crossings up in the county?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's the goal and that would be what we would proceed to, to work towards.
Work for that.
There are still a few low water crossings in the county and, and it would be my goal to eliminate all of those. Now, again, this is a, a goal that we will work towards. We are, we don't have a hundred percent of all of this in place at this time. But again, this gives us the goal, this word to go with each roadway that we would then designate into the classifications so that we know what work we should be looking at performing on those roadways.
Another question that I had, Dale, was this morning when I came in, it was brought to my attention by Mr. Yarder under the transportation code. He said, well, he was reading it to me and kind of mentioned in there that if we vote to accept these as class one roadways, we won't be able to change that again. Commissioner's going to be able, they stay as class one roads forever?
For a class one, that's correct.
So if we put them as a class one right now, we'll never be able to change those again?
We would not be able to reduce it down to a lower level. That's why those class ones need to be a true thoroughfare and not just a road that we want to have a surface.
Yeah.
It needs, and that's why the class two roadways can either be based or seal coated. Okay, so if it is not a true thoroughfare, a major route through the county, then it needs to be classified as a two, not a one.
And here on the class one, you have seal coat surface. So all the ones that we have here are seal coated, right? The ones right here?
The ones that were on the original list. Now, if you remember, I had two mileage distances on that list.
Right.
One of total mileage of the roadways and then the second number were how many of those roadways were currently sealed.
So that means that in the process, if we do them a class one, we'd have to be picking the one that are going to be seal coated every year?
Or whenever we, we were able to get that work done.
You don't have to seal coat them annually. You have to seal coat them as it's needed, do you not?
No, I meant like the ones that aren't seal coated, Judge. The ones that are still base material.
Correct. We can, again, this is the goal that we would work towards. Now, when would we reach it? Strictly on funding and resources. Okay, but this would give us our guidance as to funding and annual process, uh, programs as to what we would need to be looking at.
It seems to me we need to be careful about if they're not all class one roads, when we classify them as class one roads, that we're making a mistake, that they shouldn't be classified as a class one until they actually fit that criteria. And then.
Correct, correct. And I think that's what Commissioner Rosales was getting at, is that we need to be cautious as to exactly what roadways we put into a class one, that we are certain that it is truly a thoroughfare. Now, with that said, the class ones, according to the statute, once it's designated as a one, can never be reduced. But that doesn't mean that you can't add to it. And it doesn't say anything about the class twos and the class threes being modified. Okay, so you can have a class two that for whatever reason you determine that, no, we're not going to call that a class two anymore, it's going to be a class three, or it may even have enough residences on it to where it wants to be, we want it classified as a resident. The other classifications can change as the roadway uses change. But typically, your main thoroughfares, traffic on those usually do not reduce enough to reduce the classification on them.
So usually when you put some of the class one, they stay as class one?
Correct.
But the other two, three of residential street also be moving out?
They can be modified at, in accordance with whatever the, the usage of the roads are determined at any timeframe.
Well, I, it wouldn't be usually that if they're class one, they stay class one. It's what you said a while ago. Once they become class one, they stay class one forever. Is what I understood you say.
That's correct.
So there's not any going down after you classify one as class one.
As a, as a class one only. The other classifications can be modified, right?
Yeah, right.
I don't think we should take this whole list and classify it to class ones because they're not seal coat surfaces. I don't think we should classify them classified as a class one.
Well, today, today, that's what I'm saying. We're not going to look at the list of roadways. All we're looking at is that first sheet for the, approve the classifications. Not, not any roadways. We're not going to designate any roadways today into any classification.
We just want to have a present improvement on this right here to be able to classify now.
That's correct.
Mr. Yarder, did you have?
Thanks for having the conversation today. Are you saying that the class one roads, those roads identified as class one roads will be chip sealed? Is that what you're saying?
No, you didn't, you didn't say that.
Well, according to the classification, all class one roadways would be chip sealed at some time.
But they're not necessarily yet this time.
But they, to become a class one, when we get to listing them, you would not need to class, to restrict that classification to current seal coated roadways.
So it would be cost to, you know, base of a seal coat surface? When they bring this list back to us, I would expect that you said class one thoroughfares and they will be seal coated already. And you could have another class, proposed class one, but not classifying that class one. Just propose for class one.
Okay.
Have another list like that and we'll be specific on which is which.
We can do that, yeah. Yeah, if you want to take it in, in two steps, we can classify, uh, the class one roadways currently sealed will be listed and approved and then we'll have a, like a class two sub that will be, that are class one waiting to be seal coated.
Those are the ones you need to work on.
To seal coat. And then we can move them into a class one. We can do that.
Well, and that could be true of all the classes that, that.
Yes, they can all, all be modified.
The twos could be, uh, coming from threes or whatever and, and proposed.
Correct.
Differently, but, uh, and we need to be careful what we're saying when we talk about class ones and class twos and class threes and whether we're actually talking about actual roadways in effect. And, and that's the only time they should be classified at a higher classification as if they fit.
If they fit that.
And if they don't fit it, they should not be classified as that.
Okay.
So we're, we're just not caught up in this sort of thing.
How, how would you propose, uh, and I understand what's, you know, Pete and James are talking about, but if you have a set of existing, quote, class run, class one roadways that are seal coated and you're in limited money situation, do you, or would it be proposed that you continue to seal coat new class one roads or would you dedicate the limited run money to strictly maintain those that are already sealed? And I'll tell you exactly why I'm asking this. It's most of the seal coating has gone done in the north end of the county. South end of the county sucks as far as seal coating goes. And if you go to that deal, what's going to happen is in times of short money, if you maintain the existing seal coated roads, which I think is wise economically, you never get anything seal coated south of here.
With the seal coated roads that we have, they're going to have to be maintained. Typically, seal coated roads run on a five to seven year cycle. Five to seven years after the fresh seal coat has been put down, you need to start looking, does it need to be maintained? Okay, so right now, uh, from the records that I have, it looks like we started seal coating in fourteen. So we've got fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen seal codes down, which means we've got a two to three year period here before we have to start maintaining those first roadways that were sealed. And so that's where the budget process is going to have to utilize, you know, how much funds are going to be used to maintain current roadways, how much needs to be used for new seal coats. And that's where discussions, you know, with the court, with the public, you know, where do the funds go? But with this classification, this will help us determine how much funding is necessary for this type of work.
Well, I'm not trying to be parochial because I understand sometimes a particular area requires more than another area does. So I understand that, but, um, I'm, excuse me, in some semblance of, of equity, that was it. And what I perceive individually is just what you're saying. In other words, we've got three years worth of work behind us. In about two to three years, we're going to have to start redoing some of that. I'd say based on the economy today and based on the projections for the oil industry, goodness only knows, it can change in a heartbeat. But we probably got the next two years, we ain't going to see much seal coating. There ain't going to be much money for it. So by the time that we, hopefully the oil industry regenerates again, we'll be back to fixing the existing ones rather than doing anything new. That's what I perceive. Now, that's based on what's been done so far and I could be far afield, but, you know, I see that, that happening. Now, that's not a reason not to do what you're asking. Don't misunderstand. I'm pontificating about something else. But, you know, Pete's idea of a class one and a class one in waiting is not a bad idea. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and I totally agree. If we, if we put this into effect, my original thoughts were class ones would be just where are the thoroughfares? Basically, those that we have. And the ones that were not surfaced, that gives us the roadways already that we need to be looking at the surface. But this classification is the standards necessary for a road to fit that classification. So I don't have a problem with using the suggestion that Commissioner Yarner mentioned. They have to meet the classic, the specifications now to fall into that category. And we, that still allows us to work on class two to see, get them seal coated and moved into a class one if they are a class one roadway.
Yeah, I, I already think that we've got a minimum of class one roads. To me, the
To me, the Class 1 roads tie one state highway to another state highway, so they can, you know, an example would be County Road 211, County Road 182, County Road 163, or 5, whatever it is. Those are the type of roads where they would actually, you know, meet another highway, that people would cut across to, to save time. The...
But that's, but that's not one of the...
No, but, I mean, I...
Ideas of what Class 1 thoroughfare is.
Yeah, but those are, to me, but when we do classify those roads, is like, that's what we would be, I thought, my, my feeling is that's what we would look at, because you've had some roads that we paved, Pete's area, and some, in everybody's area, that are just kind of like old neighborhood things.
Right.
And those really aren't Class 1 roads, even though they're sealed.
Correct, and that's the thing, just because it's a sealed roadway currently does not mean it's a Class 1. It, it will go into a Class 2 if it's, if it's not a thoroughfare.
Perhaps that should be a criteria for the Class 1s, the thoroughfares connecting highway to highway.
You know what I'm saying, like, like, 127, is it really a Class 1 road?
Right.
Well, that, some of the ones that I put in did connect to existing paved roads going into the county.
Yeah, but like 326, that's, that's a Class 1.
Yeah, yeah. And some of the ones perhaps did it, in the south end of the county, you only, the county has virtually everything paved, so if you connect to them, that adds two of them, that are really relatively minimally traveled, but they do connect to another section paved road.
Right, and that's why the Class 2s could be either a, a regular base roadway, dirt roadway, or a seal-coded roadway. Okay, so it doesn't restrict us from seal-coding basically any roadway that we choose, it just won't fall into a Class 1 as a thoroughfare, it will be moved up or continue to be in a Class 2, the lower classification.
Where, where are you finding these, the definitions of these thoroughfares, Class 1, that you, where are you finding that, the definition of those roads?
There are several studies around that you can, in research, you know, I've taken from two or three, and just basically what are the specifications here in the county, what, what we have here.
Where are, I'm, I'm asking you specifically, where are you finding, you finding them in statutes?
The statute gives you some, but it doesn't go into this kind of detail, so I have looked at other studies from other research universities. If you want them, I'll give you copies of them, you can read them yourself.
How about what, what do we call the statute? Statute very clear about county roads.
I don't think the statute goes into this, this detail.
It does not, but it, but you're, you're getting, there's only three classifications of roads, the county road, five sections. Okay, and that, and that definition only extends to width of the county roads by category.
And that width is full right-of-way, not roadway surface.
I'm not going to get into nitpicking, because you know exactly what I'm seeing, you haven't read the statute.
Yes, I have.
What I am saying also is, this county, in this particular area of Texas, is probably the only county that has no plan to, to pay chip-sealed code, any, that, if you want to, every road in this county. And I bet, Wilson County, over here's D County, D County's got almost 95% of their roads done. They didn't do it in 10 years, or five years, they didn't do it in seven years. But they had a plan to pave every road in that county. Same thing with the Wick County. Why are we still messing around with, you know, category roads? Why don't we just do our job for the people of this county, instead of job protection, and pave this county? What, what's so difficult about that? We're, you know, we're, we're trying to define roads, we're trying to categorize roads, and let me tell you, on my road, and everybody that I've talked to in this county, they don't care what's category, they would like to have a paved road. And this has been an object, and, and has been an issue for this county since this county was formed back in the 1800s. Roads have always been the number one issue. You don't live on a county road, you don't even live in the county. There's not a person on this, on the county, Commissioner Courtland lives on a county road. It's an unpaid county road, let me clarify that.
I have plenty of property on an unpaid county road.
And I do also.
I will tell you, they are better now than they have been in my lifetime.
You just verify what I'm saying. You know, it's, it's a situation, it's a subject, it's never gone away, and, and quite frankly, your recommendations don't do anything to solve the problem.
Okay, let's move on. Anything else, Dave?
No, it'd just be my recommendation that we, we take this first step in approved classifications, and then we work to...
That's not the agenda item, you're capitalizing.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it reads, 17 reads, approval, does approve list of Class 1 roadways, discussion of the classification process. I think what we need here is an agenda item stating that this is what we're going to vote on, right?
Well, I, I think all we can vote on under that agenda item is the list of Class 1 roads.
We don't have that.
And we don't have that list, and so...
Mary, Mary typed this up before I sent her the, the classification, and she didn't, didn't change it.
We can pass and bring it back.
Yeah, it can be brought up here and put on the agenda.
Okay.
In the, in the light of all this discussion.
All right.
We probably have some more.
Something, hold on just one second, something else, and, if there's, if the court passes these, and I'm not saying it shouldn't or wouldn't, what would be the next step in planning how to, how to choose which roads, hey, should there be money available for it? I, I may be asking too broad a question, but I, I know that there are people who come to court every time, and they want some sort of a projection as to where do we go from here, not quite as generalized as, as the classification system. How, how would you propose we take the next step?
Well, once this classification is approved, then the next step is classifying every road in the county. Once that is, has been done, then that automatically eliminates any Class 3 roadways from being seal-coded. And the only ones that would be seal-coded would be the residential streets, which I think most of those, if not all, are currently sealed. So then it would be the Class 2 roadways that we would look at, need to be sealed. It'd be my suggestion that we start with those roadways that are more thoroughfares that have not been sealed, and begin working on those.
What, in, in light of the fact that there is this push to seal code, quote, "every road in the county," we would basically eliminate Class 3 roads, which is kind of ridiculous, because there are dead-end roads that have little or no traffic on them. I mean, what I'm hearing you say is, since there is no possibility that you seal-code Class 3 road, that classification would basically go away if the desire is to seal every road in the county. Have I missed, have I missed something?
No, that would be correct. You would have a Class 1, 2, and residential streets if that's what the county worked towards.
I'm curious about what's the definition of residential street, out of the red.
Yeah, something with, with a block format.
Is the block out that, that turns off at the old bowling alley and goes around the block? Is that a residential street, or is that...
I would say that that is because it has a subdivision plaque on record, that they are in a, a city block system.
Then, then you go down past the old bowling alley, where the hospital is, turn left, and go through there on a, on a road that 1, 2, 3, 90-degree turns, going to the next county road. Is that a residential street? There are some residences on it.
There are some homes on it, but it is not a, a, as far as I know, there are subdivisions, no multiple homes, a long, long section.
I think there is some, one maybe in there, but best not, we're talking about to do. But there are things like that, that, in different parts of the county.
The, the, the biggest question on surfacing every road in the county is, how much do you want to spend every year to accomplish that?
No, how, how much we're capable of spending financially, not how much we want to.
We're, we're starting...
They're two different things.
We're, we're starting in 2010, where the Wick County started, when I was in high school in 1950s. So it took them 60 years, months and months, to get everything paved. So if we start now, by about 2070, we might be in the same place. And I think that's where the issue is. These weren't paved overnight, they were paved in my lifetime. And I get the idea that there are people who believe that they should be paid now.
I, I wouldn't agree with that. I would suggest what you said previously. You have a plan, did it take 70 years, it takes 70 years?
Let's have a plan.
Let's have a plan and, and start getting it done, and in 70 years, the county will be paid.
I'm disagreeing with you, I'm just making the point that it has taken these counties, because I have lived here the whole time, I have...
Well, I would suggest that you keep laying on the money.
That's right.
Because it may be here, it may not be here, which you've got the additional cost of maintaining paved roads that's consistent. I, my father-in-law was the chief maintenance engineer for the state of Texas on roadways, the whole state, and I have some knowledge of that, I don't use it too often, but I understand it.
The, the, the 40s and 50s were prosperous times, until the drought hit in about 53. And a lot of those roads that were paved were paved during those prosperous times, and then they were paved after that, every time there was a squirt of oil activity, and the county had a little extra money in these adjacent counties. I mean, you look at when it was done, you can tell when they had a little extra money. Doesn't mean it shouldn't be done, anyway. For instance, as much detail as you can, please.
That's right.
And, and B County, was, much of their pavement was done 30, 40, 50 years ago. There was a lot of it paved when I moved here in 1960. And, and they haven't made a whole big jump of paving the rest of their county since then. But anyway, these, these are all things that you have to be realistic about.
We'll get it.
And, and it's good to talk about sealing, but, you know, we've got some roads in this county you can't even drive, and those are the ones we've got to take care of first. We've got to be able to get around the county before we can start paving.
The last time I was on the Aquata Hill and the road, it was almost impassable. I mean, I don't know what it is now, maybe it's not so good.
627?
It is, another road, numbers.
Okay, let's, let's move on, we've got, and, and this item is not soft, the whole big thing. We're down to 17, are we not? We've, we've discussed the payment of the county sales tax overpayment. Or is that the wrong one?
Maybe you need to be judged, no.
18 on the agenda, Discuss Act on the payment of county sales tax overpayment.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. The last meeting, we had sent a letter, open records letter, requesting the items that were paid by EOG that were, they claimed they'd paid sales tax on when they should not have. We have gotten a response back from the State Comptroller's Office. She told me they would get that report to us by October 30th of 2016. So I talked to Shirley Katz yesterday from the Comptroller's Office, who I got the original letter from, and she said that once we got that, good luck deciphering it, it gets very difficult to decipher, but we could talk to the State Comptroller's auditors, and they could help us with it. But she was okay with us waiting until we got that information before we decided to pay it. So she said that we wait until the end of October, but that was fine with her.
Are we paying interest on the unpaid amount now?
No, sir.
You're absolutely...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, we're, we have that money invested, yes, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking if we're going to have to pay the state interest on the amount that's owed back to them for the sales tax overpayment.
If we pay the full amount, we'll get a 2%, I believe, discount for paying the full amount.
2% of... It's not accruing interest daily?
No, sir.
You're sure?
No, sir. The dollar amount that she told me, the, the original letter, was the $560,000.
And we can pay that today, or we can pay the same amount a year from now?
Correct.
You're sure?
No.
Well...
I don't have the letter in front of me, I'm sorry. Does it, do you have the original letter? I know there was payment options that we could do on that.
You could pay a full-time reimbursement, about one-time check, you can apply all monthly collections to the overpaid amount until the amount has been repaid. R. number 3, enter into a 45-month payback agreement where a monthly deduction of $12,453 will be deducted for 44 months, with a final deduction of $12,435.47. The deduction would start the month after we receive your response, or two months after the date of our letter, if we do not receive a response. Additionally, future signification audit payments may be applied toward the repayment amount to reduce the length of the payback and notification of those applications will be sent.
But none of that says whether it's bearing interest, and whether, if we delay payment, we pay more, because we're paying interest, that's what I'm asking.
She gave me no indication that there would be a late penalty or interest?
Well, we need to ask her that question and find out.
Uh, no, I do not have my glasses on.
The next sentence, Row with Children, it says, "No fees of any type will be assessed on the payback amount."
Interest in the fee.
He says, "If you choose, if you choose the full reimbursement one-time check, you can deduct 2%." But it does say that no fees will be, of any type, will be assessed on the payback amount.
Well, by not paying it all back, Pete, that means that we're paying an extra 2%. If you, if you, if you pay, you get to pay 2% less.
2% discount, yes.
And so, if you don't pay, you're paying 2% more, at least, and maybe more, we don't really know, nobody here knows. And we need to know that, I, we need to...
Another item, this is a different rail, but a little research has given me to find out that in these exemptions, whatever the proper term is from the taxes, it's very narrowly defined as far as oil companies go. There are very few chemicals or repair to existing facilities are about the only things they can crank claim tax exemptions on. I think it would be very wise, regardless of what she said about the auditor situation, there should be a purpose given in that auditor statement as to why they allowed the exemptions. And if that does not fit what it should be, it may have been the fact that they, the EOG had better loggers than the Comptroller's Office had.
Well, once we get that documented, we can contact the auditors.
I understand, and we really can't do anything until then, so, you know, I, I realize we've, if they gave us a waiver, so to speak, until July the 31st, and our 2% still stands, I think we should wait until July 31st.
October 31st, October 31st.
October, we're already past one.
Yes.
October 31st, and take a look at it. I, you know, anyway, I, a demand letter without any explanation other than you owe us this doesn't carry much water in my bucket.
And I agree. We may and we may not.
Well, I'll wait until I get that documentation between now and October 30th, is when they said they would have it to me. Then, once I get that, then I'll make sure... Then once I get that, then I'll make sure Commissioners have a copy of it and I'll talk to the auditors.
I would sure like to have something from them in writing saying it's not accruing interest. If it's not, if they say it's not. And I suspect it is.
Yes, it was through an email, yes.
Will you furnish the court with copies of all of the email or any other mail that's going both ways?
Yes, sir.
So that we can see what's going on?
Yes, sir. And I'm sure it was inadvertently left off, my report was left off of this meeting. So I will have my report the next meeting and I will include all the communication with the State Comptroller's Office on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have asked my secretary to require for anything on the agenda of one of these meetings to be here at an earlier time than has been required in the past. And it's not unreasonable, but it's not two days before the meeting either, to give the court an opportunity to look at the agendas and do any preliminary work that they may want to do about items on the agenda. And so it's important that everybody get their information to us. And we will not make it on risk to get it here a month ahead of time because apparently elected officials, of which I'm one, cannot think a month in advance. And I would hope that we do better in the future. With that said, let's move on to, we're to item 19. Discuss approved, disapprove relocation options for the election storage building, including the contractor bid and cost. David, that's your baby.
Okay, I talked to William Bell with Coastal House Moving in Corpus. James knows Mr. Bell as well as I do. He came up and looked at the building and sent us by fax the following proposal. Unfortunately, he did not, but I asked him specifically for a timeframe. We will get, you know, get it done by a certain date, and he did not put that on here. But let me read what we have. This is addressed to the County Judge Walter Arlong Jr., addressed here. "We will move the 18 by 34 building to its new location and level for $3,600. If we need to take off the skirting and put it back, an additional $200." Let's see, if he has a timeframe on, he didn't put on what it was. I told him that the contractor was pushing to get it done. And then I felt if the court accepted his proposal, this is verbal, so I have nothing in writing, but that we would want it done within 30 days and that may be giving too much time. That was what I mentioned to him at the time. And he indicated it wouldn't be a problem. But I did ask him for his time structure to be included and it was not unfortunate. So it's up to the court if, you know, if you, I don't have an axi, but whoever the court wants to pick is fine with me. This is just an option.
This would be $3,800 including the skirting, right?
Yep.
What was the original bid that they were going to charge us to do, like 8,000?
About five, five or something like that.
Was it five?
Three thousand for electricity.
So basically, right up, we do it with this, and this would be 5600? With these 38?
We need to make sure that this covers the rehooking up with electricity.
That's Kirby's.
Is that Kirby, okay.
I think Kirby was, what, 1,800?
1,800.
So 5600, so it's still be a savings of what, 20 something, $3,000, I don't know what.
Bell told me that he would make a commitment on the timeframe. But like I say, when it came from his office, it didn't have it on there, so.
What about the raft, did he mention the raft?
No, I was under the impression that we were going to do that.
We can move, if he does skirt, we can move the raft, it won't be that long.
I did not ask him to include that. My understanding was we would do that.
Your say is cool.
Well, I'm saying, the county, I mean, I don't know. Shelby, I've had him a carpenter.
He might be nice enough to move the raft for us. He usually asks quite a few guys when he does the job.
But that's, you know, like I say, it's a proposal. He's worked for, you know, I have a reasonable experience with him. James, have you had direct experience?
I'm a hard person.
I mean, that's entirely up to the court, whatever they choose to do.
Well, I would move that we accept Coastal House moving proposal to move $600 plus $200 for removing replacement skirt.
I'd second it.
Any further discussion?
Giving Commissioner Reynolds opportunity, you can talk to him.
I will verify, of course, we can undo what we've done if it doesn't work. But I will verify that he can do it in a timely manner. You tell me, y'all tell me what a timely matter is, so I have something to go to him with. 30 days, 45 days, 15 days?
Try for 15 days.
I don't think we'll get that, but I'll try.
I'd say 30 days.
15 days gonna create a problem? What kind of problem?
Okay, you can put it in our decision, 30 days, but try for 15.
Yeah, that's, I was going to tell him that if it's just a verbal deal, I'm going to tell him that it has to be done in 30 days. But 15 days or sooner would be better.
The whole reason for the timeline is the location of the chiller yard for the new courthouse as well as the electric easement from AEP. So the sooner the better.
I know, and I told him, like I say, he told me write in what you want to. But I'm not going to put words in his mouth, so. I don't want to, I will, we can, Pete might want to make his motion contingent on it being able to be done within 30 days. And then if he can't do it, we'll have to.
There's a motion and is there a better section?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All vote, same sound, all voting for a motion carried. We're on item 20. Discuss approved, disapproved, except the bid from Hartner Electric to connect electrical to relocated election storage building.
Had a bid from Kirby Hartner to provide that service for $1,800, which compared to the bonus was $3,000, so I guess parent price.
Move that we accept the bid from Kirby Hartner to add the electrical for $1,800.
Just a verbal, just a verbal bid?
It's verbal, I'll get it right.
Contingent on it, put it, he put it right.
And to connect the electrical to the relocated building. Be sure that's in there. Okay, there's a motion on the second half of the discussion. If not, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All voting for it. Motion carried. Item 21 on the agenda, Discuss approved, disapproved, the order of election November 8th to 2016.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry, y'all got a late packet for me and that will consist of the order, it'll be the last one, the nice and long one. The last day to order this is August 22nd, so we won't have another opportunity to do this at a regularly scheduled meeting. So I need to go ahead and get this done. It's just giving the hours of early voting. I have some extended hours that will go over here in just a few minutes. But it's just really basic, telling when the election is, November 8th, Karnes County, it lists the local offices there for election.
Is this giving the dates also of early voting consistently, just that it's on the November 8th?
Well, right here in the box, it gives the starting date of early voting, which is October the 24th. And then the last date, those are the standard dates. For the weekend voting, it's a separate order and it's entirely another deal on a notice for the extended week days.
Okay, that's why it's on here. Okay, now I'll make the motion to approve the order of election for November 8th, $1,600.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All vote, same sound, all voting for it, motion carried.
Next is the order for weekend voting. And we want to open on Saturday from 9 to 4 and Sunday from 1 to 5.
Is that on particular Saturdays and Sundays or every Saturday and Sunday?
It's, will be the 29th and the 30th. It's listed Saturday, October the 29th and Sunday, October the 30th. Now, the reason, one of the main reasons I want to do this, and this has been discussed through elections administrators across the state of Texas, registered voters, it only takes 15 of them to petition my office to open these extended hours. And if, if we were to get a petition of 15 registered voters, they can force us to stay open 12 hours that Saturday, five hours on Sunday and petition us to stay open 12 hours the entire last week of early voting, which would cost the county a fortune if it's not in the budget. But if I can head it off at the pass, we can set our own hours. And that way we can, you know, make a schedule so nobody is getting any overtime or working too much. Saturday, October the 29th from 9 to 4 and Sunday, October the 30th from 1 to 5. We will also, and for some reason, for me to open 12 hours the last few days is not required on order. So that's only required to be in the notice and that is, you only have to do that 21 days' hours.
Okay, you're saying you want to jump the gun like get ahead of it, but you want whole days open?
Yes. Because it's a presidential election, we are trying to make sure that we provide an opportunity to vote for all those that work and work in the San Antonio area. This will give them two days. I expect to actually see a high turnout on Sunday because people are already up, going to church and out and about eating lunch or stuff. But it's been my experience, no matter what county or what the size is, that if you do not offer them an opportunity that Saturday and Sunday to vote, they're going to be very unhappy.
We used to only do it on Saturdays, then they got shut down. Unlike Saturdays, I don't think we've ever had them on Sunday.
Always have better luck on Sundays with the turnout because people are already up and out and going out to eat, so.
I've been voting since I was 18 years old, I can't remember voting on a Sunday, but.
Now, I do not do that for most general elections, but a presidential, I've always seen a necessity to do that. And it's, you know, it's proven itself, it was verified. It won't require much of my staff to be there. By that time, we'll make sure the early voting workers that we have rotate out so that they're not getting overtime. You know, just as long as, you know, we can make sure my staff, a few of us are there in the mornings, in the afternoon, and that way we, none of them will go overtime.
Saturday, 9 to 4 and Sunday?
1 to 5.
1 to 5? Guys, I don't know what y'all think about, but I've never, like I said, have done on a Sunday. But I think it'd be a pretty good idea to try it out, we can always change it next time.
Like I say, you know, it's not something that I would ordinarily do in just any general election. It's one of those, you have to look at what's going on nationally, locally. And right now, I just think there'll be a high turnout based on things that you read and hear nationally. And I want to provide people with an opportunity to work to have a chance to vote.
It's four hours on that Sunday. Normally, like I said, we've always had Saturdays, just to change them all back. And how many people will be working on that Sunday?
Probably just me. Well, I mean, and a couple of early voting clerks.
Right.
But as far as the staff, it'll just be me because I know the other girls have some too, so. I'm used to working on Sundays, it doesn't bother me.
Like I said again, I think try them.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't know about you guys.
So that's what you recommend?
Yes, sir. I would strongly recommend it because there has been talk that we will be to petition for extended hours if we don't go ahead and do it.
So we need a motion to add that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would move that we had early voting on Saturday, October 29th from 9 to 4 and Sunday, October 30th from 1 to 5. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All vote, same sound, all voting for it, motion carried.
Okay, next, I'm.
On item 23 on the agenda, proposed polling location for November 8th election.
And I have provided y'all with a list of the polling locations. So if y'all want to have a minute to look over those, do you have any questions or comments for me or?
They're the same ones?
They are, they're the same ones that we have gone back, it's 12 and 13 are together at Karn City Hall. And I went back, I know, five years to try to find out why these two were put together. And I've been doing some research, Stacy's mother was a former county clerk and she said that 13 was normally done out at somebody's home. And we had to have electrical adapters. And I went back, pulled the registered voter, and there's fewer than 30 voters in that polling location. I think it's a huge cost to do that. So, and it would help for the equipment that we would have to put in that polling location for that few voters, we could move to one of the higher turnout locations so voters won't have to stand in line. So it'd be my recommendation that we keep 12 and 13 together, hope for the rest. And also if the voters are, it's a custom to come into this polling location. If we change it now, those few voters that will vote are going to automatically go to Karn City Hall. And if they're told no, you've got to go back where you voted six years ago, then I would be upset. So especially in a presidential election.
Hi, Gary. We're on item 22, I'll make the motion to approve the poll, polling locations for November 8th, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All vote, same sound, all voting for it.
Suzy, have we heard anything from the court yet on the voter ID qualifications? I know that's been pushed by the other.
We, there's some discussion, there's some rules out there. And they're, they have to post those for 30 days. They're going to try to take back part of what was there prior to the original photo ID. They're just kind of separating it out and allowing, you know, before photo ID, you can bring in a bank statement or electric bill. You're going to bring some of that back, but you're still going to have to have multiple types of identification, whether it be three or four pieces of that, if it's not a photo. So we're still waiting to see what the final ruling will be.
I read a little bit on that, same sort of thing. I didn't realize from the reading that it was going to require more than one item. The article I read kind of insinuated that if you had a utility bill, that would be sufficient.
You could use it from list B if you also had something from list A. So they've got different categories of what's acceptable and what's not.
Well, that's fine. I was curious.
Okay, I mean, we're moving on to item 24. Discuss approved, disapproved, appointing presiding honor of judges for the November 8th election.
I.
And that's on this list that you gave us?
Yes, sir. Those are the election judges that have been approved through both party chairs.
Everybody has it. And this list is what you're proposing?
Yes, sir. I sent this over to the party chairs, they asked that my office put together a list because we had a lot more information than they did based on past election judges and clerks. So we put the list together and they both approved it. But it's my responsibility to present this to the court for approval.
And have you certified with all of these people that they're willing to serve?
They, we sent letters out last month trying to confirm this information and they have all been returned.
Okay. Is there a motion on item twenty-four?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signal five, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sound, all vote for it, motion carried.
Court has the sign is correct.
Yes, sir.
And item twenty-five, on the agenda is a tax collector's report, including the update on the tax rate calculation.
Good morning. Our tax collections for the month of July, M and O, month to date, seventy-one thousand three oh seven twenty-seven, year to date, nineteen million, three hundred sixty thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and eight cents for a collection rate of ninety-seven point one seven percent.
Ninety-seven point one seven.
Uh huh, it should, it should be on your report, Judge.
Sorry. I'm sorry, that's beautiful, it just took me a while.
Okay. Delinquent month to date, M and O, six thousand eight eighty-three fifteen, year to date, seventy-nine thousand one eighty-sixty-three for a collection rate of twenty-nine point one three percent. INS month to date for July, five thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents, year to date, one million four hundred eighty-six thousand four ninety-six ninety-four for a collection rate of ninety-seven point one seven percent. Delinquent INS for July, six hundred and one dollars and a penny, year to date, seven thousand three ninety-seven twenty-three for a collection rate of twenty-nine point eight three percent. Roden Bridge for July, nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and fifty-three cents, year to date, two million seven hundred eleven dollars, se, two million seven hundred eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents for a collection rate of ninety-seven point one seven percent. Month to date, delinquent Roden Bridge, one thousand one thirty-five sixty, year to date, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars and eighty-one cents for a collection rate of twenty-nine point oh one percent. Rural Fire for July, three thousand six forty-four eighty-seven, year to date, nine hundred eighty-six thousand six seventy-one oh seven for a collection rate of ninety-seven point one six percent. Delinquent month to date, Rural Fire, five sixteen ninety-seven, year to date, five thousand two fifty-eight fifty-six for a collection rate of twenty-seven point twenty-one percent. I've spoken to all of y'all, giving y'all a little update, a recalculation on the tax rate in the portion where we, the county is in a tax increment reinvestment zone along with four other entities, it involves that property behind Walmart, that owns twenty-one hundred and sixty acres or something like that. And using that calculation in the tax rate, we inadvertently eliminated the Comfort Suites Hotel, which should have been included, so that changed the tax rate just a little bit.
Comfort Suites or Candlewood?
Candlewood, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, Shelby. Candlewood, yes, thank you. The effective rate changed from point four four one two four five to point four four one three six nine. The rollback rate changed from point four seven three zero one nine to point four seven three one five four. Very slight change, but it did change a little bit, just wanted everyone to be aware of that. And to meet the publication requirements for this ra, proposed rate, we need to get that in the paper by August thirty-first. And the tax code states if the county or city proposes a tax rate that does not exceed the lower of the effective or the rollback rate, one simple notice must be published and no public hearings are required. And the calculated effective rate of point four four one three six nine is the lower of those two rates and we would need to have the proposed rate published by July third first, excuse me, August third first. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any question or comments about the tax rate calculation? If not, we'll move on to item twenty-six, report of fees found when collected by polling departments, county clerk first.
For the month of July, we collected a total of forty-one thousand six hundred two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Have they compared to other months or other years or other cities or anything?
It's slightly lower in the last few months.
Any particular reason, is it lower every year than this month particularly or there's no?
I couldn't tell you why.
Okay. District clerk, is your clerk out here?
We have her report here, if I can get it out. For the month, grand total was twenty-five thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents, less checks dispersed of three thousand six sixteen sixty-one, for a total for the month of twenty-two thousand twelve dollars and eighty-three cents for the county.
Questions or comments? County attorney, do we have a report from?
You want me to read it? Okay, we have hot check collections monthly. Let's see if I can get down here, in July of twenty sixteen, it was thirteen hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. Okay, we have a calendar year comparison, one one sixteen through seven thirty-one of sixteen to eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars and seventy-four cents, and that compares to last year's, and I'm talking about the calendar year, fifteen of sixteen thousand nine thirty-two forty-six, so it's running just about where it was last year, or about half of last year's collection rate through six months of the year.
If y'all would punish us not, we should have the same period of time so we could tell.
Yeah, a physical year would be better instead of calendar.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you. This is a piece. Are you the only one that has one or that's here?
We only got two, two and three.
Go ahead.
Oh, I don't need it, I'm gonna replace one, excuse me.
Go ahead, Judge.
Okay, my, the number, new cases filed with women under the eighteen, total amount retained by the county, nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, total remitted to the state, seven thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-two cents, the total revenue collected was twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents.
Okay. Your two?
Three.
Three, okay, I'm sorry. Rest of the family's not so bad. No other reports from JP?
JP two, had seventy-six new cases filed, kept by the county, nine thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-three cents, remitted to the state, five thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, for a total amount collected, fifteen thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. One in four, and I, I don't have anything but one for.
Anybody?
Who, who we have any report yet on the pending resignation of one, JP one?
I don't, I didn't really think about it.
Well, I mean, I've just been hearing that, that she was.
I have nothing on it, I don't, I don't know anything about it.
Only thing I've heard is hearsay.
Well, that's the same thing, but I just, that was what I was asking for, is hearsay.
Well, no, nobody talks to me about that sort of thing. Until it's a done deal, aren't it? Which is okay, doesn't bother me too much. Is that all from the JP's?
Yep.
Constables, do we have any reports from any of the constables?
This is Mr. Bennett. He's got a letter, he dressed, the letter's addressed to the court with his condo, his duties and stuff, and total miles traveled, traveled two thousand seven sixty-seven, JP court appearances, forty-seven, zero bailiffs, zero jury trials, civil papers received, thirty-four, served thirty-three, attempts to serve civil papers, seventy-one, criminal warrants issued, twenty-two, warrants served, twenty-three, attempt to serve warrants, sixty-seven, active warrants on hand is thirty-four, civil standby is one, assisted other agencies, seven, self-initiated field contacts, one hundred and three, illegal dumping, zero traffic contacts, semi trucks, twelve, passenger vehicles, twenty-one. Sporting events, one, residential security checks, two, remove road debris, one, and training hours attended, eight, service fees collected, one hundred and fifty dollars, all service fees collected by JP, one of the sheriff's department, this activity for his information purpose only, and that's all he has.
Well, I would make a comment, apparently the constables feel like they're not required to report to the court, and I disagree with them totally. I would hope that they will change their attitude and make the reports that we require. And I would be sad that we maybe cannot punish those that are not doing what they should do and not being able to reward those that do, and there may be ways we could do that, I'm looking into it now. If they choose not to respond to the people that elect them, I don't believe they do. We're gonna look at some new things. So with that said, let's move on. Juvenile department, we have a report from them?
Didn't see anything yet.
See, I like to talk about their business. I think the juvenile rubs off on some of them perhaps, maybe I'm wrong. Permitting special projects?
I'll do these, Judge, I'll do both of them at one time. The, excuse me, floodplain determinations were sixteen for the month, total fees collected were four hundred and fifty dollars, the total county portion is four hundred and fifty, the totals for the year so far are sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars for floodplain assessments with two hundred and seventy-two permits being, issued, if the right word out here, for the sewer permits, there were four for the month. Without going through everything, the county's retained portion is eleven hundred and sixty dollars after TBCQ and the inspector's fees were paid. For the year, there have been twenty-one thousand one hundred and ten dollars worth of sewer permits issued, a total of fifty-three permits for this period, there were two new homes included in those permits and one mobile home. And for Roden Bridge permitting in the sense of water lines on the right of way, for the month, the county collected thirty thousand dollars even. For the fiscal year so far, the county has collected three hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. And I'll throw a day of a little rose on this one because we've had a few issues with stat oil in the running area, they are a little bit bad about trying to sneak by things and I would ask the court to think about this. I have not researched it and I don't think Twiler Dale has, but we believe that stat oil without authority put a permanent pipeline on county roadways over in precinct four. It was done a long time ago, it's not something that's current, but in researching some other things over there on a all but abandoned part of the county road that ran adjacent to the railroad track, we find pipeline marker stakes going down the, in the county driveway and we believe that if they extend that, that's a part of the road and I, I live in the area, I can't tell you the name of the road, it goes up to the, Bozy Jansen's house.
Did it?
No, it goes into the county road, runs into the county road. But anyway, it, we believe that they have a permanent pipeline there that was never permitted, that they just arbitrarily decided, ain't nobody watching, we'll put it in. And so, we need to research that and if that be the case, perhaps turn it over to county attorney's office because at the very least, they owe us about thirty-five or forty dollars a foot for pipeline right away. I can tell you the look, but I can't tell you how bad it looks, okay, yeah, that's okay, I can tell you, it's, it's the city dump road that the Foshan driver run. Let's see, find my way here to run you. It is County Road three twenty-five, which is all but abandoned, and County Road three twenty-four.
Let's, let's do some further checking and whatever we need to.
And they swear that we had a fuss with them, they wanted to lay some seismic lines down the roadway and I said, I would assume those were the same as water lines, go pay your fee. Oh, well, we'll put them in the highway, I mean, in the landowners, because Twiler went out there on a water line issue with them, I drove down the road, well, there's your two lines laying down the road and so I suggested they pick them up, well, at that point, they came to pay the fee on them, but they would not have had I not stumbled on them. I started trying to pick up them up and drag them out on the highway, but I figured I'd given them the opportunity to pay us first.
Well, good work.
Well, it was purely, it wasn't, it was purely accidental, I'm sure. But anyway, when I brought up this alleged line to the land man, he assured me that that had been grandfathered in, I told him that from my knowledge and my little time, that there had been very few, if any, permanent pipelines approved on county roadways. And he said, oh, well, this, this was from two thousand eight or two thousand nine, it had to be grandfathered in.
Oh, it didn't, I mean, they just go out there and do it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say, nobody was watching that, just do it.
Well, we need to keep watching that.
I'm sorry, I got off the subject.
Oh, that's all right. You said everything of your, said everything you had.
Yes, I'm.
From special projects?
Yes, that's, all of the reports.
Were they from year to date, last year, based on collecting, you know?
On what now? Here.
But what do they have done compared to last?
Last year, I don't know if you even put that, I found that.
Let's, let's, let's ask her to put in where we can compare.
Sure.
From year to year, not the whole year versus a part of the year, that, that, that was the.
I'll ask her for year to date from, for the year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're down to the sheriff's department. Sheriff, I know you got yours memorized, just.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, sir. The Karn County Sheriff's Office, July twenty-six, monthly call report, alarm calls, residential business, we have twenty-seven, domestic disturbance, we have twenty-three, assaults, we have four, criminal mischief, three, harassments, we have eleven, fire, we have thirty-five. fire, we have thirty-five, escorts, we have sixteen, released livestock, we have fifty-three, prisoner transports, we have sixty-nine, request officers, one ninety-seven, road hazards, we have ten, suspicious activity, we have fourteen, suspicious subject vehicle, fifty-four, theft burglaries, we have thirty-five, warrant service, fifty-three, miscellaneous calls, two thirty-three, welfare checks, six, reckless drivers, twenty-eight, traffic stops, three eighty-six, citations, one eighty-nine, warnings, one ninety-seven, commercial vehicle, we had nine, road, uh, traffics, county road traffic stop, thirty-four, and the county road traffic stops with traffic in it was eighteen, accidents, sixty-two, and arrests for seventy-three. Uh, we have four. We have twelve in custody this morning, uh, we also have one that's in the state, uh, Methodist Texas Hospital, a prisoner, it's been there since Saturday, and probably will be there on, be there for the next five days.
How'd you get there?
From, that he's in our custody, gives him.
Transported by ambulance?
Transported by ambulance, uh, and, uh, they were gonna do, uh, air life, but we, they did EMS.
Saturday wasn't quite as pressing as it might have been told originally.
Right.
Good. Um, well, what do you investigate about six welfare checks, I'm just curious?
Judge, we have, uh, we'll have families that called them out of town and trying to make contact with their parents, uh, and they're not answering, so, uh, they usually wanna also go out there and make sure they're okay. A lot of those are from out of town, uh, little ones trying to check on their families.
I misconstrued that, I thought it was welfare checks, I, you check.
No. We can have a whole bunch.
I wanted to know what time to go on welfare.
Everything with the welfare check.
County road stop, county, county road stop, those are on, county, county road.
County, county road, yes, county.
And then the other ones on state highway? Traffic stops?
Traffic.
They're both county, uh.
Okay.
Both on, just, one's the traffic unit, the other one's regular deputies.
Jail population's down a little bit, looks like.
Yes, sir, which, which is good.
Okay. Is the TDC gonna be using the courtroom over there?
I know we've had several of the JP's already reserved slots, uh, and I know that, uh, they made contact with Chief last week, I just don't know what dates they have.
They were having court last week, uh?
Yes, but, uh, TDC, I know they called, but they haven't had court themselves there yet, it's JP's are the only ones so far have used.
Yeah, 'cause they, they courted us one week. Okay.
Yes, it is.
Is that it? Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome, thank you.
EMS?
Yes, sir. Um, for the, uh, month of July, um, had a hundred and twenty-seven dispatch requests, uh, a hundred and twenty-two patient contacts, uh, transported ninety-three of those patients, uh, twenty-two refusals, uh, twelve canceled calls, we had five calls that had multiple patients, uh, we did do four air evacuations, uh, four non-emergency transfers, which those are generally discharges from the hospital back to the nursing home. Um, we did, uh, one, uh, emergency hospital transfer, uh, from Auto-Cadre to San Antonio in July, uh, we did one fire standby, resulted in, uh, forty-three trauma calls and ninety-one medical calls. Um, the, um, the, the year-to-date number is on here, but I'll, I'll give the physical year, physical year number is thirteen hundred and seventy-two dispatch requests that we've responded to since October one. Uh, total collections for the month of July, forty thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty-two cents. The, um, fiscal year total for, uh, collections for EMS was, uh, three hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents, and it's not on there, but the total billed for July is, uh, sixty-six thousand, um, four hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Four forty-four.
Yes, sir.
Looks like your collections people are doing a pretty good job.
I, I believe they are, um, I, every month, it seems to be the, the gap gets narrower. Of course, at first, we had a kind of a big dump, we put on them, and it took us five or six months to kind of get that number back down, um, where now we're billing every month is basically what we did the previous month before, after we do our quality assessment and everybody looks at the run forms, we, the run form actually goes through four different people before it gets sent off to billing to make sure that the information's correct from the call and the information for the billing is all there, patient demographics, things of that nature are all there.
Do you have a problem with insurance companies paying what they should be paying, or are they getting used to?
Well, there's a big hoopla right now, and it's gonna go before the state legislature this next go-around about what we call balanced billing, which is what we do. Um, they, the, the ideal is, is after whatever the patient's insurance pays, if it's not the amount we bill, then we can bill the patient for the remainder. Well, not every state allows that with healthcare providers. Uh, and it has to do with in-network and out-of-network providers, most ambulance providers in the world are not in-network providers, uh, because you deal with just so many different demographics of people. So, um, we, we really don't have most of our private insurances, and when I say private, I mean, non-Medicare or Medicaid-funded, even though it might be, United Healthcare is still a Medicare plan. Um, most of the ones that are your general typical private insurances pay their eighty percent minus deductibles or copays, things of that nature. So really, our private insurances are, are, I don't see that they're not paying their part. Uh, we're, uh, and across the board, the ones that, the ones that we tend to have a problem with are the ones that, that are kind of your, I call them your third-rate carriers, they're not real good, they're not real, and they're gonna fight you to the end just to try not to pay that claim or to drag it out as long as they can, hoping you're gonna give up on it or not get it billed. And Texas Medicaid's one of the worst ones about that. But we don't, we don't traditionally, they don't pay very much anyway, but we, we really, seventy percent of our call volume is Medicare across the board. Uh, and, uh, I believe twenty percent is private insurance, five is Medicaid, and then another five is your self-pays, work comp pays, things of that nature.
Y'all had fair success, Dennis, with the, uh, the copays or the situation with that?
Actually, we do, since we went to this company, I think they're on the ball of, about getting the, about getting their statements back out, um, I know that some people, you know, they get a medical bill, well, I can't pay this this month, and they might have forgot. These people don't have a problem giving them a little bump to get them paid, uh, so we really don't see a big problem with that. Uh, especially this time of year, 'cause most people have paid their deductibles already and they're, you know, so they're kind of maxed out, so the insurance is kicking in, but we generally don't see, we, at the first of the year, after January the first, um, you may see that for a six, eight-week time span till everybody gets those deductibles paid down, uh, but we, we generally don't have that big a problem with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to, I guess I have twenty-seven on the agenda, reports from the regional department. Y'all, y'all are still alive and operating?
We're still moving around.
Yeah.
And I think y'all have gotten the packet of information provided to y'all. Uh, most of the work this month, um, have, we've been working on the, some of the dirt roads we have in the county, most of the seal code was finished up last month, so we have begun work on some of those, uh, dirt roads that I had noticed out there, uh, one fourteen, one fifty C, two ninety is, is our big money roadway this, this month, uh, with the oil traffic that we had out there on that, that sand subgrade that we had is just totally gone, so we have, uh, spent quite a bit of our, our resources this month on two ninety, and three oh four, uh, was one of those low-water crossings that I found, um, that we have put pipe in and now bridged over, so that's one less that we have to, have to deal with.
Do you know how many low-water crossings we have left? Do you have any idea?
No, I don't. Uh, I do, Shelby Commissioner Dubick was able to get a map from SAR showing all of the, uh, creek crossings in the county, and once they put what I think is a hundred-year storm on that map, there wasn't much of the green coverage on that map, so there are quite a few crossings out there. Fortunately, most of them do have structures in them, so we don't, we probably just have a couple handfuls of those little water crossings that we need to, uh, address.
And as you're going along, would you kind of accumulate the number of those? I'm not telling you to waste time going out and looking at everything, but as you're doing the other things, are you concerned?
Right, there's several things that we're looking to start tracking.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have locations on, on several different IMs that we probably ought to, so that we can maintain and, and keep up with, and that's, that's one of the, the areas that we do wanna start tracking.
Did y'all work on one ninety-five, correct?
Uh, yes, we have been.
Got the phone calls more than that?
Yeah, uh, last week when we got the, a couple of phone calls, Willie went out and looked at it, we told him to, we finished up that one fifty C, moved that equipment over to one ninety-five, and they, they are working on that. Uh, he took a couple of days off, his stepfather died last, end of last week, so he's back today, and they should be working on, on that section, yeah. Any other questions on the, the report that?
I noticed y'all doing a lot of shredding, these other fifty-two.
Yeah, we've got the, I think we got three shredders out, uh, roaming around the county, that's one thing that we're looking at here, the first of September also, where we have shredded, um, just like Tech Dot, we've got a whole lot of Georgia cane popping up all over the county. Um, the herbicide company that has been used in the past supposedly has a herbicide that will, after multiple applications, of course, will eventually kill it out, so we've got them scheduled, uh, here first part of September, we're gonna go around and try and treat some of those locations that we have, uh, cut, and the cane is, isn't young and growing, hopefully that will kill a much quicker than, than mature cane. Couple other things, just to, to bring you up to date on, uh, all of our seventeen forty-seven projects are complete, we accepted one eighty-two this last week, so next month is in the process of providing final documentation, uh, closeout fees on those, those projects. Uh, hopefully here the next, not the next, not all of them put in the next meeting, but hopefully three of the four we will have for this next meeting, and the fourth one should be the first of next month, I'm pushing them to get those out, uh, as Luanne has asked about the reimbursement, we've got all that money paid by the county and need to get reimbursed by Tech Dot as quickly as possible. We also have the, uh, striping project that was advertised last week, it should be in the paper again for this week, uh, have already had a couple of companies contacting me and request bid packages, so hopefully here the end of the month, we'll have some bids to, to open. And last on my list, um, I think it was the last, maybe two meetings ago, Commissioner Dubick reminded all the departments to submit requests to TAC for the, uh, risk control reimbursement program. Road and Bridge did submit a application requesting, uh, steel-toed shoes for all of the, uh, employees that work out on the right of way, along with a second crane to be, uh, added to our second sign truck to help remove, uh, old posts and put up the new ones. We got notified here a couple weeks ago from TAC that our request had been rejected. Uh, they claimed that they had over four hundred applications and funding did not go as far as they had anticipated, so neither of our requests had been approved.
Dale, um, I know this is a counter to what I believe most of the time, but since the budget for this year for road and bridge was fairly healthy, um, and next year it's probably going to be substantially leaner, are you attempting to get as much done as we possibly can in this fiscal year, the remainder of this fiscal year? Knowing that we're gonna go into a lean period? I mean, I'm not telling you to waste money, don't misunderstand.
Right. No, it's been my understanding in the past that they have tried to spend as much of the budget, if not all of it, as possible, and my theory is that that's what I'm giving the money for, is to spend on the roadways, and therefore, we will spend all that we have. Now, the last week and a half, Palma and I have been going through our documents to verify where we are, and was notified yesterday from, uh, Sharah in Luanne's office that, uh, she has paid all the bills this month, and we've got some differences. So Palma is off this week on vacation, she is captain of the grandson, so she's being grandmother for a week, and so when she gets back, we will get with them and we'll compare documentation to see where we are, but it's my, my goal is to do what we need to do this year.
Well, ordinarily, I don't like spend downs at the end of the year to, to plead the budget, but like I say, this might be the year that you wanna do it, 'cause like I say, next year is probably going to be substantially leaner some.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lexus's office, please.
Hello again. Okay. Um, I've been in touch with Alicia from the Secretary of State's office, we've been, um, communicating back and forth, trying to get Secretary Cuskas to Carls County for a visit. Um, she first asked me if I had a date in mind, and this is in the middle of not knowing when we're going to move, so I told her no. I recently contacted her just a few days ago, asking her if they could possibly come out the second week in September, it's my understanding we will be moved by him and attempt to organize. Um, so, I, I'm still waiting to hear back from her on that, but if, um, the secretary can come out, I would love for all the elected officials to be present, not just the county, but many county employees that can come. He said he would come even if it just meant talking to five people at the Dairy Queen in the booth, wouldn't be the first time that happened, but we would like to plan when he does come to have a little registration drive as well.
Did you tell him that Dairy Queen was torn down?
No.
We made an eleven place.
I've got a Sonic, I just sat outside. Um, at the end of July, um, the elections office collected another twenty-nine, it was twenty-nine sixty-one seventy-five five from Fall City for the contracted election, I have provided a spreadsheet that basically just shows Fall City what it was for, and it was a check. Um, we, I did get a confirmation email, um, in the middle of last week, that the Democrats, uh, had submitted their final, uh, primary finance, and it was approved by the state, so we should be getting some funds from them any day now. So we should be getting some funds from them any day now. Our office has a voter registration drive set at the Kennedy City Library and City of Kennedy on August the seventeenth. And we will be at several city county, city and county functions in the near future. We do have plans to go to other libraries, nursing homes and assisted living facilities. I've talked with the ones that are here in this county. We basically went over this a while ago. I did send out letters to the election workers and also the polling locations. Those have been returned and it was a good response. We only had a few workers that said that they were not going to be able to work in November. And I only have one polling location and it's Good Shepherd Church in Kennedy that said that they might possibly, the room that we would use, be under remodeling. So she didn't know at this time, but we keep me up to date on that. We do know from all polling locations where they will open the site and we will be given keys ourselves to open. So we have a record of that from now on. So we discussed this a while ago. I thought I was gonna do the report first, but I wanted to let you know we had contacted the election workers and that the appointment of election judges and alternates are all in here. I am currently working on the paperwork for the programming for the November eighth election. And Renee was nice enough to help us out and do some work on our election equipment to replace, they're called pigtails. And they're ports that are on inside and outside of the equipment where we piggyback the equipment together. So he was able to replace those. And then there were some cosmetic issues, Velcro straps that some of our, that just needed to be replaced where duct tape had been used. So he, he was able to get that fixed for us, so thank you, Renee. It could, it would've cost a lot had we had to send that off just for those minor things that could be replaced here locally. Our office is working on balloting material to be prepared in advance so we can mail out. We already have on file five hundred applications requesting a mail ballot. And so we want to be prepared this, the minute we get the ballots, we can get those processed and out. We're going through each of those five hundred requests to make sure that since the beginning of the calendar year, that none of those voters have been canceled for any reason or checking to see if addresses may have been changed and aren't updated on a request for a mail ballot. Ongoing processing of new voter registration applications and all other changes. We have talked with the troopers and they're looking at their schedule to set a, a former date to switch offices. And what we're all hoping on right now that Carl, that will have to take the furniture apart, will agree on August twenty-second. There's still some issue, the new stuff won't be in by then. But there were several conflicts in scheduling to do at the date that Carl could with the furniture. So the trooper said if they could get their stuff moved out and put into this office and us just get what we already have into their office, then they could work with Carl on their furniture and he could go ahead and come out and set ours up. Once it's delivered, that, the twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, that's when he said he would have it. And I know most of the troopers had a conflicted schedule that day. So we're just trying to get this process moved along. And I will keep y'all up to date on any progress as far as that may, any questions?
Thank you. Alter though? I guess you could probably say you're still altering and covering pretty well.
Hey, I will give you some brief notations that need to be noted on page three, numbered page three. The numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner. There was a deposit that was not received into Roden Bridge Special and deducted from Roden Bridge Special Outside Investments. That deposit was identified yesterday and subsequently received in August rather than July fifteenth. Although it doesn't change the bottom totals, it does change the totals for the individual accounts. For Roden Bridge Special Cash, instead of a negative five hundred and eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, it should've been thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. And instead of Roden Bridge Special Outside Investments, instead of five million seven hundred thirteen dollars, eight hundred and ninety-eight, five million seven hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, it should've been five million one hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and one cent. Again, that does not affect the bottom balances. Total shown on page five. Page six is the debt obligations. Currently, the only things that are outstanding that are to be paid this month and checks have been issued are our certificates of obligation and our bond payments. Page seven reflects the total interest income earned during July two thousand and sixteen. Total for the counties' various monetary funds, twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. The next several pages are the totals of the outside investments for all the funds within the counties. The supporting documents to confirm the balances reflected. The total outside invested as of July thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen was fifty-one million one hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and five cents. And if you go to page sixteen, items of interest. Sales tax received in July two thousand and sixteen, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents. Sales tax received in same period two thousand and fifteen, six hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, which is a decrease of approximately forty-five point two four percent or two hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. The sales tax received through July for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, four million six hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-six cents. The sales tax received in October through July two thousand and fifteen, eight million four hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents, which is a decrease of approximately forty-four point six percent or one million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eight cents. Repeat from last month, the courthouse restoration for the re-project. Reimbursements have been submitted to THC and we're awaiting receipt of those funds, less ten percent retained. As was discussed earlier, as far as the sales tax requested reimbursement by the comptroller, by reported that the comptroller said they could provide additional information by October thirteenth, twenty sixteen. And that's it.
We have no idea what the, the business will be.
Just has something to do with an overpayment by an oil and gas producer, EOG. That's why I suggested requesting the information so we make sure it really is items that were not taxable.
Yeah. And that they were actually here.
Correct.
And they operated all over.
Correct. We also completed our two plus days of onsite examination by IRS on payroll and accounts payable records. They were here last Monday, Tuesday and part of Wednesday. Their focus is on correct classifications of employees versus contract labor. They're looking at visiting judges, visiting court reporters, election workers. I had brief discussion with the agent, semi-challenging the visiting court reporters and election workers as to whether they're contract or not. Needless to say, we differed of opinion. He said we should have his actual report hopefully by the end of August. At that point in time, he will enumerate all his identified issues and we will have the opportunity to concur or to appeal. His comment when he was doing his exit interview was it could be potentially in the area of four thousand dollars worth of fines for the misclassification of these particular positions. We have been proactive and starting October first of two thousand and fifteen, reclassified visiting judges to employees. But we have not done those others. Whatever is identified and agreed upon, effective October one forward, will be the date for compliance. I did put it out on the auditor's list, sir, as far as others that have undergone these type of audits and whether they've appealed or just agreed and going forward. And those that have actually appealed, it has opened up two more years of investigations and lengthen the process, which probably will end up with higher monetary penalties. Something else that they looked at very hard was the reimbursement to employees for travel and conference expenses. Correct documentation for those to be able to substantiate whether they are a taxable benefit to an employee or not.
When, when you get to election workers, isn't, there used to be, I don't know whether it is now, but isn't there a threshold of how much gross pay there has to be in a annual cycle for them to be, to come under the social security, blah, blah, blah stuff?
Correct. Anything five hundred or below has to be run through payroll, but it is not subject to social security until they reach seventeen hundred. But the moment they reach seventeen hundred, it's retroactive back to the first dollar.
For a person?
Correct.
So election workers should not ever fall under that, shouldn't they?
Under an employee situation.
Under employee status.
Based on the current IRS code, they are, they have to be paid through payroll, so therefore they're considered employees. But they aren't subject to social security and Medicare deduction in match until they reach seventeen hundred dollars. Depending on how many elections are had within a year, there could be a couple of the early election employees, workers that qualify to meet that seventeen hundred dollar threshold.
So a lot of this is semantics, whether they are contract or whether they are employees, really doesn't matter that much.
For the election workers, correct. It, it's not necessarily have, have much of a dollar impact.
Should've shot the auditor and buried it.
So the blank ten ninety-nine that didn't get sent out to all election workers?
No, because election workers should've gone through payroll and therefore had nothing to.
But that's where the four thousand dollar bond is coming from, is what ten ninety-nines have sent out.
That is what he is anticipating, yes.
That in order to, it wasn't so much that there was a lack of payment of taxes. Again, it's a play on, you didn't put it right, Pete.
Possibly, yes, yes. I, I'm anxious to get his actual filing report and see the discussion.
Are we doing it differently from what we've done in the past or has the law changed or?
The law as far as election workers has changed. Like I said, we started paying the visiting judges through payroll October first of two thousand and fifteen due to these other discussions that have been had. But this is the first I've ever heard of visiting court reporters being added to the list of employees. Because they are not oaths by the district, they are substitutes contractually. They don't have a set calendar where they come in and provide services for any of the courts within the county. So I think that one is one that we can possibly appeal if it appears that it might be worthwhile. But if it's gonna open up four years' worth of analysis, we may want to say thank you.
Which it's gonna do, because they're gonna do that in order to push you forward.
If you don't push back, they just continue to get their way and push and push and push, push back. I like this, I think.
Election workers subjects, I'm not sure if on the ones that are, is then on and off, people on the trailer side and be paying for payroll, be paying for AP. That's something that we both have seen probably last year or two, which way to go with this, so. Whatever he says we're supposed to do, we...
We'll see what his, what he says.
Do you now do, do not send ten ninety-nines to election workers?
Only if they make six hundred dollars or more are they subjects. Did they receive a ten ninety-nine because that's a rule for a ten ninety-nine for contractual, yes.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
You want to say goodness?
Are we doing bail toll rate?
Yes, we are. Can we do this so that I can get the checks cut?
Over here, huh, that's great. Senator Rogers? To go ahead and pay bills. Senator, finish all the reports, please.
On page nine, you will notice a payment that's noted as chapter three eighty-one. It's thirty-three thousand fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. That is our annual payment to HEB on the chapter three eighty-one economic development agreement that was issued when they built the new store.
That word?
Oh, no.
How many more of those do we have?
Probably at least eight because it was three hundred and something thousand total. And we paid approximately thirty-something last year and sixteen the year before? Or sixteen last year?
Year before, I don't remember.
But we have several years left. That would've come in anyway, I feel pretty confident. But neither here nor there, we gotta do it. District court appointed attorneys, the payment this cycle is four thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Pickup and transport to the medical examiner's office was eleven hundred and thirty dollars this cycle. That is two individuals that were deceased.
But I did notice that Lance was a little cheaper than Kennedy. I think Kennedy was seven hundred and something dollars for what it's worth.
Payment for the jail facility survey due to the conflict with the railroad issue, eleven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. On page ten, two-thirds of the way down, prisoner care medical expenses this cycle, two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-four cents. One of those is an EMS transport for over two thousand dollars from Live Oak County to Bee County, to Spahn Hospital in Bee County. Others were eye exams, teeth extractions. Two-thirds of the way down, road materials this cycle, two hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventeen cents. Contractual equipment and supervisory operators, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Two-way radios, this is the annual agreement, ten thousand six hundred and eighty. And I will mention Dale touched on it earlier, as far as reconciling what they show in pre-seek tracker and what the county books show, they have over expended the road materials line items. So that is what Dale's concern is because they don't show the expenditure that we show. So that's what's going to need to be researched. And then the various rural fire departments received monies this cycle to a total of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total bills for this cycle, five hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents.
This is not, maybe, excuse me, maybe construed as criticism, but it's not. I noticed we had a Home Depot purchase and it may have been something that was unavailable locally, but it's just a comment for Renee, that if you get a better price at Lowe's or Home Depot, that Alamo are usually meeting, and you don't have to drive to San Antonio just for what it's worth. In agricultural extension service, Megan, it's on page 11 of the one I have, we show apparently large expenditure for the extension service for computer supplies.
I don't know.
That's page, oh, I'm sorry, page four.
Four.
Page four, I look at four of 11. Remember what that is, LaLana?
I'm sorry, I was answering a question of each.
We went Poth and Sons for extension service, almost over $4,500 for supplies, and they just got a new copier, didn't they?
This is not computer, I mean, copier, that is a combination description for multiple departments, it is office supplies that they are spending down their budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then part of that would be their copier expense for the month.
I didn't pick on Dale too much this month yet.
Sorry.
Yet.
I caught him.
Okay, you went through the radios. South Texas Oilfield, are they still putting in culverts, or why do they?
Yes. Yeah, we had two big ones down on 390, 391, a big 48, 36 inch. They're still, they're still, they're getting together.
That's fine, I just noticed they were there. They would pay the bills.
One second.
Discussion, question, comment, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same thing, they have to deal with one more.
We've had four of them, which can't read anything, I can't hear anything.
Was there another one I have to sign? Was there something else we have to sign, Jeff?
Yeah, on the election.
On the election, so.
Do it on.
There, things up there for the elections.
Is that last page?
The long one?
No, not the long one, it's what about the judges?
Shall we, oh yeah, shall we do that?
That one looks like a published version of John Hancock.
She's always just yelling inside her. It's like.
You want me to get this?
Well, I need to tell her something, I'm not signing this.
She's not paying her office as well.
She's got a dumb old. Your money picture?
No, we all victims assisted.
We have a few more needs.
Large, I remember 27 of the victims.
I mean, that's a question.
Do we have a victim?
Well, we don't have one, but only the county attorney gives a report.
I didn't find anything to report it.
I bet Renee has her report.
No.
Oh, here was the skip.
Buildings maintenance, that's what I made.
Morning.
Good morning, sir. Well, afternoon now, by a minute or two.
Yeah, it's lunchtime.
Please don't go in overtime just now.
If you go down the list, we have a couple estimates on cleaning proposals. If you look in your packet, there's gonna be the current, proposed, and your cleaning companies that I got estimates from. Last meeting, you asked for a breakdown of the companies that I got estimates from, and what we're paying currently is what we, who we have now, what we're gonna have. The custodian, we have one full-time, and I've got to add out for a part-time custodian. And ballpark is gonna be what we're paying yearly for that custodian. And then you have your budget supplies that we put for per year, is the total's there on the bottom, 48, 203. And the estimates that I got from three different cleaning companies are right there. The top one is without supplies, and two bottom ones are gonna be that they supply their own clean supplies, but we gotta supply trash bags and paper towels and sets like that. So that'll take our clean supplies probably down, because we're budgeting $8,000 for cleaning supplies. If we go to the cleaning company, it would probably only be like two grand, five hours at most.
How many days a week with the cleaning companies? Can you hear, five days a week, three days a week?
For this building, five, two for the tax building, one for permit, one for juvenile.
You hear five?
Yes, sir.
One time a week?
Well, that's, that's the issue right there, they'd be coming in after hours.
They're saying, how are they gonna clean the offices?
They would need a key.
And that's for all three of the services, the same number of days?
Yes.
You can't just go to the bridge, one day?
One day, JP 1, one day, a road and bridge.
On, on the current, excuse me, the salary's are that you're.
Full-time, part-time? Do those include benefits, or is that just?
The part-time would not be benefits, only the full-time has benefits.
And that, that is included in your $48,000 estimate?
Yes. Well, no, sir, I'm sorry, it's not, not on the 24,000, not on the full-time, that's without adding the benefits.
That's just salary.
Yeah, that's just salary. The part-time, there is no benefits.
So that figure would go up some?
Perhaps, yes, it would be.
I've heard this government thing, probably what they claim for, for the references that they've got.
I've got from them, they do the social security building in San Antonio, and they do Kennedy area, they're up, they're pretty much spread out, they got different areas, and they do government buildings as well. Who, who is this, Renee? Double A?
Double A.
They do a little bit of everything, they do theaters, they, they got the social security building in San Antonio and other buildings and stuff.
Well, they would need a key to get in, and they're gonna, it'll probably be a crew of two to three people, probably two people I would resist to suspect, that they would have here cleaning all the offices and the hallways and the restrooms. In the past, Renee, there's always been an issue about, do you buy cleaning at people's, in offices, you know, after hours?
Yes, sir.
I just, I perceive that a problem, I guarantee you, that'll probably be a problem.
I'm not making a proposal, I just wanted to let you guys see the numbers, if you were to go that way.
That's what we would be looking at.
Yes.
I think it's good, I mean, yeah, I see what you mean, get them cleaned, get ready for the next day, regardless, there's always been an issue about who goes in and who goes out of offices, so I think that, that's not gonna change.
I understand. I'll just find a different way to save money.
I appreciate it, girl.
And then if you go further down on the major projects and costs, you're gonna look at the moisture on the east and west ends of this building, of the annex building. Those two air handlers, from my understanding, the way it looks, it was, they were never running from the gate though, and so I brought in a recommended company who knows of these units, and now they're up and running, and we're, got good air movement, we have no moisture in the buildings on both sides of the building. There hasn't been any moisture problems, but we haven't had a storm either, even though the humidity is varying from 56, like today's is 56 percent, so it's gone from 50 percent, we had it up to 90 percent, and we still haven't had no moisture, dripping down on, on the east building and the west side of the building. So, those two units made a big impact on the air movement in those, in that side of the building. And we had the, that was a big, that was a big, it was budgeted, of course, in our AC and maintenance, that's where that money came out of, because those, we had to replace all the cartridges in there and filters. I learned a lot with you guys being here and talking to different people, the manufacturers of stuff, to handle the maintenance on those, which I'll, I'll be, I'll keep on those.
Does Bang Air like to go on the ground, San Antonio?
Yes, sir. And their bill was 4315 to replace all the air cartridges and everything, bulk units, the belts, and the filters, which I supplied, they just put it in. And so that made a big impact. The workers program, probation testing, that's gonna go back into effect, I think, in a couple of weeks. We got approval, but I guess they have to redo the contracts, so we ain't gonna have it.
Yeah, it's, that one's still right.
Okay, so we ain't gonna have it for like a good month, but they'll be back, so they can help with the basic maintenance prevention that I wanna have done on all these buildings. I'd like to get this one secure, and then I wanna get done, and then I wanna move on on to different buildings to, to prevent maintenance in each areas and help with the landscaping, because we don't have nobody for landscaping. So I think those guys will save a lot of money carrying some of the workload here. And then you look further down, you got Bang Air, we already made this contract, and then you got HTS, which is like double, but they know everything about these unit that we have in this building. I don't really wanna go with them, I would like to use them for troubleshooting, I mean, that would save us a lot of money, we just call them out when we need them, because they are very expensive, but they know, they know these units, and that's what's, what's good about them, they can hardly recommend it.
So both these quotes are just for the air conditioning in this building?
In this building alone. We still got to do the tax building, the permit building, the juvenile building, which I've been looking at those units, and there's some issues there. I'm gonna fix, rectify that and do the, do the basic maintenance on. The juvenile building was, they put a horizontal in the, in their median area, and it was just, it was bad, it was, the way they installed it, the way they put it in, it's just horrifying. So I fixed a few things, put in some drip pans, rectified the drip problem that they were having, the moisture that they were having, it was constantly dripping, and the pressure of everything was just popping through their, dropped ceilings and stuff, I put supply with up there, put a drip pan, so it's not happening. But they need some love in there, over there for, the restroom thing that we redone, their floors need to be redone, there's a lot of work in there, the juvenile buildings, very good at the tax building, but that's down the road, we'll put that, we'll cross that bridge and we'll get there. But I just wanna talk to you guys about the maintenance building, the AC maintenance here, and then you got pest control, I was looking at prior billing, it was like $6,000 for pest control. I thought that was outrageous, and it was, so I got a couple estimates, called in Bug Mobile, he's 2,700, and then I talked to Jeff from D and N, who you guys have now, and he took it from 6,000 down to 2,000 dollars. So that's a $4,000 saving direct there that we can, if you wanna keep him.
Why was there such a big lift there? Why was he charging $6,000 and it went down to 2,000 and he didn't?
I'm assuming because nobody was watching him or asking him or questioning him, and plus he was doing two other buildings too, he was doing the old jail and the old courthouse, and the storage building across the street here.
And then, then he, what, now he's not doing it?
He hadn't had to, other than the, the old jail he had to, but these other two buildings, no.
So he hadn't been doing it, but he was still charging the same?
Yeah.
For how long was that?
I can tell you, I'm, I'm, I've only been here 90 days.
How long has Jeff been here, that guy?
The 6,000 was what was in the budget.
Right.
I can look and tell you exactly what was paid each time, but that's the budget figure.
Would you see how much he was billing us? Because if he was billing us, kept billing us for that, there's no use to use him again. How would that change it?
Probably, Robert Boone's 1,500 when he goes, I don't know, two times, four times.
Well, what he does was, he would charge a certain building a certain amount of money, and if you count all these different buildings up, it would be that total for, because he comes four times a year. So what he told me he's gonna be doing, I believe it was gonna be, one second, here we go. Annex building is 250, tax building 100, juvenile building 100, permit building 50 dollars, storage building, which is across the street, 50 dollars, so that's gonna be 500 dollars per quarter, which is four, so that's 2,000 dollars a year. Bug, Mobile Bug is a little bit more, he's 2,700 per, per year, and he's basically gonna do the same thing four times a year. I got you. I thought I had it with me, I'm so sorry, I thought I put it in my packet. But he's basically 50 to 75 dollars more per, per building, same thing, but D and N's willing to do a little bit more than Bug, Bug Mobile would do. He's willing to come in and handle snakes, he'll come in and handle tarantulas, whatever it takes to come, he's ready to come out of the spot and do these things that no other company will do. Because he's been with us before, long, for, he says he's been with you guys for quite some time, he don't wanna lose you guys, and he's willing to, to lose here on this end to make up some elsewhere. And he's willing to, to lose here on this end to make up his housework.
This is for one year?
Yes, sir.
Because I know you haven't been here, as you mentioned, very long, at this point, is, is the services that are rendered by D and N acceptable?
Yeah, for the most part, because all they're doing is coming in and spraying corners, spraying the walls. If there's an issue with birds or whatever, tanks or whatever, I mean, they're gonna do the same thing. Anybody else is gonna charge you for a service call. But they, they basically do the same thing, they spray outside, they spray inside, it's. Yes, sir.
To back up just a minute, Renee, on the Dyken, you said that seventy-seven sixty-four was for maintenance. What is their hourly rate? I'm trying to figure out what kind of number we should put in for troubleshooting in the budget for AC.
That would be HTS as the company?
Ninety-five dollars now.
Yes, it's ninety-five dollars an hour. That's in this packet here. Yeah, ninety-five dollars an hour, plus they charge it for hours, which is meaning, when you get the call, that's when they're gonna start billing. Not when they get it, it's when they get it.
Where, where do you ready to be?
Well, I like HTS for troubleshooting, but for maintenance, I don't think we really need them. They're gonna be too expensive just to wash filters, injects for free on input and output, maybe wash the condensers. But they will be good for repairs. But fan goes out, a motor goes out, or if they're troubleshooting, like we have trouble in the break room, they came out and troubleshooted that. Now they're not using the mobile air conditioning unit that they had been using, they stopped using that because we've got that fixed for the moment. It's cooling it way down, it's stayed at a constant seventy degree before it was in the eighties. So they did fix that problem.
So your suggestion would be to take the maintenance contract with Bang and use the other one, HTS or whatever it is? On an as-needed basis on the hourly rate?
Yes, sir.
For the many gritty, dirty problems, is that right?
Yes, sir. We still got one issue in this building. The main computer that runs all the computers for thermostat is not communicating with the, the condensers and the thermostat, they're not communicating. So what we're thinking is to run a new line from the main computer, which is your main thermostat, to the condensers. Meaning, so we're gonna have to go down in the concrete, bust out another wall here, not a wall, but where the, where's concrete, where the, where all the pipes are, are at and everything. So we're gonna, we gotta make a way to get to there, back to this way. And that'll solve the communication problem between all the thermostat units. That's the next thing I wanna get, get done for this building, as far as that goes. What maintenance does it?
Did you, did you say HTS charges ninety-five dollars every time, so if they get the call, it's angry, drive down there, drive back?
Yes, sir.
What we?
But if they do the job, we have to pay them.
Yeah.
These are not, these two items are not action items, so if that would be your proposal, maybe we ought to put them on there.
I, I apologize, I should've put estimate, not a proposal, 'cause I'm not proposing that, I didn't want you guys to know what's going on.
But, but I mean, if we need, if we need, is it something we need to, the court needs that?
There's one thing I wanted, if you guys vote on today, that I wanna, I wanna put some blinds up in front of the break room and attorney generals. I got an estimate for that and they're gonna put some, they gave an estimate for some blinds, that'll block that east sun coming in during the day and the afternoon. So it'll cool that area off way, way, much more.
It's in the budget for that, isn't it?
It's in the budget, so you can go underneath our, our building, it'll, it'll go into our. It'll, it'll go, I got money for this year, it'll come out of the building maintenance. I got, because it's, it's only sixteen thirty-nine and actually that's half price.
I was gonna say, if you got the money and the budget for it, it needs to be done, well, little I know, we don't have to vote on it.
I can go there. All right, yeah, 'cause I, I recommend we do that, that's gonna stop a lot of the heat coming in on that east side for the morning. And the afternoon, 'cause when we're having the meetings and stuff, they're moving those tables away from those windows, 'cause that, that heat's intense coming in. 'Cause, 'cause you got them all lined up in the hallway over there and it'll help quite a bit.
I'd say if you got the money, if the money and the budget, the money and the budget.
It's there, I wanna use it for that, I would like to use it for that.
The, I don't know, contractually, we would have to vote on those things, wouldn't we? The, the Bang Air and the HTS and the pest control, if those are, if those are contractual items. I would think that the county attorney should look at the proposals or their contracts that they're asking for and then put it on the agenda.
I got them in my emails, I could print them up and hand them on to Herb and, and you gentlemen as well.
I'd like benefit of that some here.
James, to answer your question on D and N, they bill fourteen hundred and fifty dollars per quarter.
Thanks for all the building.
For what buildings?
Which is five thousand eight hundred dollars per year, that does not include the new jail. That's what we currently are paying right now.
And he's been doing a great job, it doesn't, new jail, he's been there already and what I like about it, he's local. You call him and he'll come over there if you see any other bugs or anything else, so he, he did a good job at the old jail also.
Yeah, he did, he did.
The other guys are out of Victoria or somewhere else, Bug will go, this guy's right here, you need him, you see bugs or ants crawling, he'll come right there, so.
I remember when he sprayed the jail, he put out an appropriate signage and everything.
Yes, he, he provided all the, what they call the forms, put in all the closets and all that for the poison, so he provided all that at no charge to the county. So.
He's willing to bend over backwards to, to keep the contract and he's willing to drop his feet.
Anyway, but as far as I'm concerned, for some minutes, has done a good job for us, put the old jail and new jail.
I'm sure he'll lower your bill for you too.
And I'm not sure if he's compatible, I didn't hear what your figures were, but he seemed to be competitive with everybody else.
He was a lot higher.
A local bill never be cheap anyplace I know.
Yeah, he's twenty-seven hundred, he loses only seven hundred dollars more, because, well, technically, D and N was set at six grand, almost six thousand dollars. Bug, Bug, mobile bug was twenty-seven hundred dollars, so that's still a substantial difference there.
I don't know if he comes back and charges whatever, if Mr. Minsut won't charge, if he's part of the contract, and you see bugs that come there, he don't charge that to me, I don't know if local bill does that or not.
And, and he, and he said that himself, he said he would be happy to come back and, and do more than will to contract, that he's willing to go above and beyond.
Commissioner Reynolds is always pushing us, for us to spend locally, and that's why I like to play with some minutes.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
I agree, I like to keep it to local, you know, and many businesses.
It's a, a little bit of a bad taste that it got bumped up to six thousand from what it should have been, but.
All it took was a talk and a phone call, I called and I said, you know what, hey, this is what I'm doing. You know, what's going on, why, why so much, you know, difference in the wake-up call? Pretty much what it was. Pretty much what it was.
So he suggested the last night, yeah?
Yes, he did, he put it down to two grand.
Yes, he did. But yet, he doesn't, he did not, I don't believe he had a proposal in here, so if you would.
He's, he sent me his contract. It's, I got that right there.
Judge addressed that a minute ago, so.
I'm gonna print it all up and send you guys all that, that for, as well as the AC contracts or bids too. And then below that is everything I've done for the, for, for maintenance on all the buildings, or repairs done on all these buildings. Every building, there's been a lot of work on and besides all the different meetings and mowing and landscaping and everything that's been going on out here that need tending to.
Renee, on, on my, for my personal benefit, I wanna say I appreciate what you've been doing. I think within the first nine days, you've made a big change in, in the overall operation of this building as well as on the maintenance stuff, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, your, your assessments of the situation and willingness to think outside of the box, which I find hard to do sometimes, is good. Looked at things that some of us would've said, eh, if we've been doing it that way, that's okay, and you come in and take a second look. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. County personnel policies, emergency management.
Policies, we, we met last week and then we made some changes and we're gonna stop, now the buyer's gonna get the policy manual with all the appropriate changes we've made and court is coming and approving. Emergency management, they're still working on County Road, on, excuse me, on State Highway seventy-two, they're dumping material back, getting compacting it in. And FM eighty-one out of Panama and Hobson, they had to go in to take out just approximately half the roadway out. That stuck underneath the road pretty good, they took all the asphalt out and now they're in the process of going back and filling that back in as well. Other than that, that's basically it.
Give the status report.
Well, Renee gave us pretty good on what happened here, I'll be looking on the jail. Through the, was trying to check the cords and the concrete that were poured in. We found water under there, found some PVC pipe broken. And they got two engineers down there to look at it, check it out. Pipe's had been repaired, there was a sewer problem and I think the sewer pump was not working in. Robert said they pumped it out and called it through the sewer, working on that, getting that big, did the pump fix that?
Yes, sir.
They're having a problem with getting it worked out, making care of it. Seal, the jail's in operation, bring the seal, yes.
Okay, status report on the citizens' collection station?
I don't have much on that, I haven't talked to, also. Recently just won something last week, you, shall we?
Well, the county, you, you should have received a copy of this, it should be in your box. The, after I got this, it was a notice of violation and on TCQ addressing those issues that they found. And then I think it says, this is received August the first. And it says, enclose a summary which lists investigation and findings in addition to certain outstanding alleged violations identified for which compliance documentation is required. Please submit to this office by August twenty-fourth a written description of corrective action taken and required documentation demonstrating that compliance has been achieved for the extending alleged violation. One or more violations documented during the subject investigation includes unauthorized activity or hereby advised continued operation is unauthorized. So one of the L three is gonna have to write a letter, I guess, to TCQ or somebody is about corrective action that was taken and. And they gave us July thirty-first date to get all this done, we were done by July thirty-first, so. Then they'll have a hearing, I guess, after that, so. I don't know, they're gonna write the letter, but y'all can decide that as well.
That we would have to sign, is that, that was one of their issues?
Or the sign, sign order, I think, man.
Dale made the signs for us.
What we can do, all we're gonna do is call TCQ again and ask them to make another visit, a site visit.
And that's what I thought it'd be.
Just, I can give them a call and tell them that.
And the client's asked them to come back and, and that's bad.
Because we wrote a letter and we do something, we write something wrong in there, I prefer for them to physically come back and we can meet out there with them. They can do a site visit and tell us if they were still not at compliance or we're good. We're out there, that'd be the easiest way, right?
One thing about it, don't be taking stuff out there anymore just to dump on the ground or store. If we have to do anything, make sure we put it in a, under a shed or something, because laying stuff on the ground there again just gives us another opportunity to say, hey, y'all are in violation.
I'll call them as soon as we get all of this meeting after lunch and I'll tell them to, but the last time I told them to do a site visit, been a couple of times, kinda, you know, they haven't called me back. And I'll make sure that, I'll make sure they call me back and I'll call them back the next day.
Call them ahead and call them. But everything is, everything is done. We even found, I had them cut the brush in the corner of the day. That road that runs on the backside along the back fence, somebody dumped a bunch of tires there and threw some mattresses or some other stuff, so, you know, it's.
God, it was that long ago?
I don't guess nobody were going back there to look. So I have picked up.
You didn't find that tin burrow, that was silver, but it's supposed to be buried, we can't bury anybody.
But it's, it's all good.
Anything, brother?
Other than, I, this is, this is, this is for everybody's information, but on August the twentieth, on August the twentieth at nine thirty, it's a Saturday morning, there's gonna be a ceremony that's gonna take place at Lenz Hall. On FM six twenty-six, you need to embed a marker, a historical marker. It's gonna be located right across the, the Lenz Hall, it's to honor Gregorio Cortez. The Texas Historical Division recognized Gregorio Cortez as a significant part of Texas, Texas history. By a dedication and official historical marker designation honors Gregorio Cortez as an important and educational part of Texas history. So Robert, the. Nine thirty on the twentieth. There's, that's, it's, in nineteen oh one, for those that don't know the deal about it, he was, he was investigating a horse theft in Cornish County Sheriff, Timothy Brad Morris. Went to the Thulamire Ranch outside of Kennedy and Gregorio and Ramondo Cortez. They got to a confrontation about difference of, of the way, the way the expression was said, I guess the words. Ramondo got shot, next thing you know, Gregorio Cortez, he shoots the sheriff, and he shoots the sheriff from Zallos County and it was a big chase throughout Texas and they bought in, they bought in people from out of state with horses and they tried to carry him. And the big thing is, he said he, he made fun of the Texas Rangers all the time.
If there was a law were used.
Yeah. But anyway, it's gonna be, they're gonna, they're gonna just, they're gonna make a historical monument for him and.
I think it was Galvano in jail, I heard.
Yeah, it was a certain law.
Anyway, it's, it's gonna be, I think, I look for probably a lot of the historical people to be there, so it might be a traffic problem. August the twentieth.
Anything, brother?
That's all I have, Judge.
I don't know, have we had the status report on the permits?
We've done that already, Judge, that's all I could say.
Okay, if there's nothing else, does that say it's in Fayetteville, if that would pay big?
Yes.
All right, turning with?
I'll make the motion again, second.
All in favor, signify by leaving, I suppose. Raise your right hand if you want to wave as you leave.